And we continue to do this with the site. We send our best wishes to you for continued success and look forward to hearing about your accomplishments during the year. It's a pleasure to be among your supporters. And this is from the Executive Director of the International Paper Foundation. So with that, I'll ribbon the cup and check the hand over to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, DJ.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna, as always, thank you. Carrie, you can...
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Do you want the letter?
Yeah, the letter goes there. You want to write the check over to me? You're welcome. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Do you have the budget reduction sheet?
Yeah.
Okay, so next we're going to talk about budget.
So, as we all know, we had another reduction in our BOE budget. And that will go out for referendum on the 24th. Because we had to make some reductions, $50,000 worth of reductions. My job as superintendent is to go through the budget with finance director and come up with additional reductions. So I know you've put everything together here.
Oh, I have it two different ways. Oh.
Do you have the news, Todd?
Well, because he's new.
So what Bob has given you is a total composite of everything that has been reduced. And then my recommendations are in here as well. So, thank you. So at the bottom where it says budget reduction number four, this is the last go around to get to that $50,000. Some of the reductions that I am recommending to move forward is under each school's budget, there is something called other supplies. Taking $3,000 from each school, that would mean a reduction of a total of $9,000. Under each school line, there is instructional supplies, taking $3,000 from each school, that's a reduction of $9,000. Removing funds that would have offset the cost of field trips at Mary Fisher, that total is $3,096. Also at the middle school, which helps reduce the cost of field trips, that would be $3,096. And I'm recommending a reduction of $23,000, middle school spring sports. And that is a total of $47,192. That gets us balanced to $18,637,572. And that is our budget that's going up for referendum. And you can see the history of what we've cut from the very beginning. Middle school bathrooms, B C V A position, summer school at the secondary schools, furniture requests, a late bus, a teacher at the middle school, printing, two permanent subs. And a list that I just am recommending for this evening. I have gone through that budget with Bob, I can't tell you how many times. And there's nowhere else to go. There isn't any other staff that we can reduce, we've already done that pretty well. And we're at a critical tipping point here that we have to make some serious decisions. Do I believe philosophically as a superintendent of schools that cutting sports of any kind is a smart move? Because we're trying to develop a whole child. However, at this point in time, we're in the business of academics. And unfortunately, $23,000 we need to offset that budget. And so I'm making that recommendation, it's not something that I am doing lightly, but it's something that must be done.
Is the $23,000, the all of the, all sports, all spring sports?
Middle school, spring sports, yes. It's transportation, coach stipends, official stipends, and a minimal amount of supplies, actually Deb runs our program, I'm very tight, but...
All right, so let's open up for discussion. What spring sports do we offer right now besides softball, baseball?
Track.
Track and field? Gymnastics or anything else for middle school?
Gymnastics at the middle school. That's about 50 students. Deb gave me a breakdown heading to my office, but it's about 50 students for the spring sports.
So obviously sports is the hot button on this, but you're talking about more cuts. If we look back through the history, we're talking about more cuts to supplies. We already have teachers that don't have supplies in their classroom. Things weren't ordered over the summer because we didn't have a budget. So you're talking about more supplies, more costs to the kids and the families for field trips. Obviously, I never want to cut sports, it hurts the high school program, it hurts the kids, it's wrong. Every cut that you look back at directly affects the kids in the classrooms. Okay? We have a new position in our budget that we have lived without for the entirety of the hundred and something years this school's been in existence. And that is a security officer. And it's $50,000. There is no way in good conscience we can continue to cut things from these kids when that $50,000 is sitting there. It's a new position. I want it. I want a security force. I think we've done a good job in the way we've been approaching this, the research we've done. But it's a new position that takes care of the entire $50,000 cut that this town just voted for. And if they don't want to fund it, we have to stop cutting from the kids. I don't even understand why this is a discussion, to be honest. It's a new position and we've lived without it.
This is unusual because we would have never started a new position without a budget, and we did it. And I'm at the point, I'm, let's be very clear, I'm the one that suggested this position. I want to see it. But like Sean, I can't, I can't go along with these cuts. Now, if we were talking about cutting middle school music, everybody would be up in arms. If we were gonna do middle school, whatever. But it's sports, and there's a lot of kids that come here for the sport. That keeps them interested, keeps them coming to school day after day after day. I can't...
We're talking about just the sports, Bill, we're cutting $9,000.
No, I get that.
You know, that whole list right there directly affects the kids.
If we do not have that position, who is in charge of the security people like that?
We'd go back like we did last year, go to the town and say, "You deal with it." I mean, here's the thing, who was in charge of them a year ago, two years ago, three years ago, four years ago? We didn't have it. And it worked.
Things are different now, the world is changing. I really think we need that position. I mean, we've seen that...
I agree we need it.
I think it will help with the bullying situation.
I agree we need the position.
And that's a big thing in this school, this bullying, we hear about this all the time.
It's a big thing in every school. I need a position.
Everybody's entitled to the...
So as superintendent of schools, I do not bring a security position forward as a reduction because I think that would be a huge mistake. Safety and security first in schools. And, you know, just knowing the work that's happened since the start of school that has made our campus more secure. I cannot in good conscience make that recommendation. So I professionally disagree that this position is essential. And we can make do without the other things.
Well, we could also make do without the...
I just find it hard to believe that a position we've never had, we can't make do with. But we can make do without all the supplies, the field trip money, and the sports. Yet, we can't make do without something we never had.
But I'm going to defer to Melinda's judgment here. She's on the ground during the day, she's here during the day. We're not here, day after day after day. And Linda brought up the bullying problem. We've had this problem for a long time. And if this is going to help, I mean, does somebody, everybody in town is screaming, "Bring back the..." The resident, you know, yeah.
Resident trooper.
Right now.
Resident trooper.
Resident trooper, which would cost us twice as much as the security officer and do the same thing as the security officer is doing. Being in the school, talking with the kids, getting to know the kids. Why wouldn't we do this?
It's not quite the same, so they're two very different things. But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And believe me, I think it's necessary. But do I think it's necessary right now? You'd have to convince me.
So other schools have brought up the pay to play. And I know, I wasn't at the last one, but I did read the minutes, I have, I don't see that on Facebook. I've also seen many parents wanting to leave this school because of bullying, that we don't do enough for it. You know, and I really think, and I don't want to see, my daughter went through sports all the way up, you know, she played everything that she could. You know what, it really, we need to start thinking about the student itself. We need to start thinking about their safety, and we need to make a change. Because obviously what we have right now is not working. And, I mean, pay to play, I mean, Killingley does it. You know, and if there's kids that can't afford it, there's other ways to like come up with other plans. I don't know if it's something, but...
Pay to play is a feasible one, Todd said, through just middle school sports alone. Let's not talk about the high school, which is another big nut, but just middle school, $69,000. Take that and divide it by the number of students, and that almost goes up to $400 a student. Families can't afford that, I know those families that can't afford that. At the high school, I think the budget is like $221,000. And I'm including transportation and officials and everything else that goes along with it. Sports is expensive to run in any school system. Do I believe it's an essential part of developing a child? Yes, I do. Do I like recommending that spring sport be taken off the menu? No, I don't, but I really believe that it's a way to balance the budget.
I wish we could find another way, I really do. I hate to see the field trips go. You know, I hate the supplies, I hate to see those go too. Because, you know, a lot of teachers buy their own supplies, which really hurts. They don't make, you know, they don't make enough to supply their own classrooms, they really don't. I mean, we look at their salaries and say, oh, they only work 180 days a year, that's below me, and I know that. I hate to make these cuts. I'd like to say, let's take it out of special ed.
Okay, deficit, so as superintendent, I can't knowingly deficit spend, so we can't do that.
Well, and go back to the Board of Finance and ask them for money.
Well, that was going to be my suggestion, since it's, I don't think we need to vote on this right now. But I would like to go back to the town, to the selectmen, and to the Board of Finance. And get, see if they will fund the security position. It's town property, it's a town building. I would like to see, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see their response.
Well, that would...
We have, we've gotten a kind of a global agreement that the next excess cost reimbursement, $41,000, would come back to us. The Board of Finance said they were going to give it back to us. That funds a lot of this, right away.
Right.
All right?
But we already have $350,000 in the budget, so we can switch... But remember that we have five additional students surplus.
We're going to be way over anyway. But, you know, you could say knowingly underfund it, but seven of them could leave tomorrow, and then all of a sudden we have a huge...
Surplus.
Surplus. Not that that...
And there's...
That's happened in my career.
But we don't know.
With special ed, how do you possibly knowingly overspend?
Well, we know...
The second one new kid comes in, you have, but you haven't knowingly done it.
Right.
Right, but all we know is today, what it is, what's on the table today.
What's on table today, but what was on the table in June? What was on the table in July? Knowingly overspending on special ed, I would feel like is almost an impossible actual... No, the knowingly spending, because I know what you mean, it's a law, I get it, you can't knowingly overspend. The problem is, the day we set this budget, we had X. As soon as one or two kids came in, you are now no longer knowingly overspending. You're just not. And I'd argue that going to...
Well, I kind of feel the same way, but let's put that aside for right now.
Right, you have a budget, you don't have a budget.
We don't have a budget yet. And once we do, well, we don't know what it's going to be. It could be defeated again. And it's unknown. But I would like, I would like our town leaders to tell us they will fund it or not fund it.
I think that's an excellent guess.
And then we can, then we can make a plan from there. And if the rest of the board feels that they want to keep the security in, that's why we're aboard, we're nine of us, and we will vote that way. All right? But if we can somehow, I feel very strongly about the sports, not only the sports, but all the supplies. But sports, but that doesn't solve our problem, that doesn't solve the problem for going forward or for next year. We need to reach this public that just doesn't support the school.
We have some revenue that comes into the town from most rental, we have some excise tax that comes into the town.
The Board of Finance meeting would be the 19th?
19.
The 17th, the Board of Selectmen's meeting.
So let's draft a letter to the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
And we'll lay it on the table, and we'll, then we'll go to the Board of Finance. And we'll lay the cards on the table, yes?
I really think it's important to put in that letter that, you know, I don't think we put in the letter, but, you know, we all hear, oh, it's the town budget, the school budget. It's the town's budget. And, you know, stuff like this, you know, is very important, and we need to support everything. And I don't want to see sports hot, but I don't want to see, the kids not be safe either. So I think it's important to, like, write that letter and get it.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't keep saying not wanting the kids safe, they are safe.
They are.
We have many, many things here.
They are, but today's world is a lot different, and we need to look at things differently.
But even with armed security walking around here, things can happen. So, so that's not going to be the cure. It certainly would help. And I want to see it, believe me, I want to see it here. But at the cost of... Of these, of taking it away from the kids, again, and we're always taking it away. And every year, we freeze our budget, and we concentrate on special ed, and we take away from the kids. So how much more can we take away?
I think when you see this in black and white, sorry, when you see this in black and white, people have to understand when they look at this, I don't know if there's a way to share this online. But I think this is something that people need to see, what we've been cutting. It's not just a dollar now, it's people's positions, it's, you know...
Hang on, Val's intention.
So, in another month, I'll be on the board for two years. And I've gone through a lot of these meetings and the town meetings. One of the things I think we fail to recognize is so much revenue has been lost in our town over the last 10 to 20 years. We always look at the cuts, the cuts, the cuts. I think it's time we have to start putting a little bit of pressure on people that are running for office or in office relative to the town and the money we need, the revenue to come in. We've got nothing coming in, so we continually, we're cutting, we're cutting. And it's really the kids' education that's suffering. If you look at all the tax stuff, everything for revenue that's come in in the last 10 to 20 years, it has just plummeted, plummeted, plummeted. And we keep saying cuts, cuts. What about saying, hey, who's out there promoting this town that we need more revenue coming in? And if you don't have revenue, you can't do the things we need to do. So cutting, I'm not one for cutting a lot of stuff. I grew up in town, one of nine, if it wasn't for the school system, I wouldn't be where I was today. Yes, it is different, we've got mental health, we've got bullying, we've got safety things. I mean, you think about 72 doors in this building to cover. Having a security guy in one section is not going to cover another section. There's so many other components going on, we just narrow in on, let's cut, let's cut, let's cut. I also know, my mom's family in northern Illinois, they had come from 3,000, 3,000 people in the town. They were similar, 10 years ago, they had a similar thing. They started a foundation for sports. Everyone is a pay, they pay for sports, and they literally, the town raises the money for their sports. They're only 3,000 people. And they, they have big sports fields, their school is three times the size of this. We, we just keep thinking about cut, cut, cut. Let's start putting pressure on. I see Charlene is here. Charlene, if you're running, that's one of the things, we need to start looking at revenue. Okay, we've got the branding thing going on and all that stuff. I sat on that committee five years ago. They're no better today than they were five years ago. There's been nothing really moved forward. We need to start thinking about what we want, and it doesn't have to be industry, but it could be service stuff, whatever. We just keep cutting from the kids. And I agree, a lot of these kids don't have anything, they come from very depressed economic backgrounds. It's one of the first areas people come to because they know they can get services. But it's got to stop, and with a point we have to say, should our selectmen be taking raises? Should these, all this stuff is occurring, yet we're cutting the school, cutting the school, cutting the school. I think Melinda is right, she's on top of this thing, these guys go through this budget. When does the cut stop? When does the bleed stop? And that's where I'm at. I like, sitting in on all these meetings, we never say accountability for the town selectmen to bring in industry. Where, where's the stuff going on? You're spending for roads and all this stuff for what reason? You don't have new industry, you don't have service stuff going on, there's nothing new in this town in the last 10 to 20 years. Several of the houses on Thompson Hill, they're paying limited, for Marion Apple's got those houses, those are off the tax roll. So everything is off the tax roll, we have nothing new coming in. And I want to stop the bleed for the school. I think it's time, we have to really start putting pressure on the selectmen and the groups that are running our finances and say, we need, we need something coming in because we can't cut anymore.
To be fair, there is Economic Development Commission, they're trying to get business in, the branding people are trying to get business in. And if you're unhappy with them, you vote them out of office. I mean, I don't know what else to do, but they can't force people to come into town. Less than 3% of our tax base is industrial.
I'm not, Bill, I'm not saying, I'm not saying force it, but I sat on that committee five years ago and I've watched, they have not, there's been no signage improvement, there's been nothing to attract people to the town. You have to attract, I'm banking on, have you guys been watching Polar Park up in Worcester develop? Right, all this development, they've got all this stuff going on. You know where those people are starting to come? Three people bought houses on my mother's road in, for Massachusetts, because they can't afford them up there. So they're trickling down. Well, I'll tell you right now, if we have a sucky school system, we're not doing the things we need to do, they're not going to come to Thompson. They're going to go to Putnam, or they're going to go to Killingley. And people are coming in to buy. That's going to be a big, big cash cow up there, that's going to happen, where that business is going to flow into Thompson because they can't afford housing up there. I can see the whole development taking place, and it's only 50 to 18 minutes down the road. And people would love to live in our area if we have good schools. If we don't have good schools, we're not there to back our kids, no one is going to say, hey, Thompson is a great place to live. And it is a great place to live. We have very little crime and stuff. There are other things that we need to start selling as our assets for this area, and we just don't do that. It's veram.
There are people in this town that are so against the school, reasons why we don't want to see them. We go to Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance on the 17th and the 19th. And it's going out there that the school's been reduced by $50,000. So we want you to go here on the 24th to vote yes, they are going to vote yes, because they're going to say, we reduced them by $50,000, and they just can't even answer $50,000.
It's impossible.
Well, I also think that there's a big conflict of interest on the Board of Finance. When you have somebody that has, you look at the Board of Finance, how many people on that board have a vested interest, other than probably Suzanne, and I'm sorry Suzanne, because you are, you are one of the big ones that promote and help us. But there's nobody on that board that their kids are either homeschooled or they don't have kids in school, so why would they want to? And then the other thing that bugs me while I'm on my soapbox, somebody will go and spend, they won't spend $40, consider $40 in their taxes raised a year, but they'll go spend $160 at the shopper's guide and take out an ad against the school. Really? It's turned into a personal vendetta, I think, with people, and it's not about the kids, it's about their own personal agendas.
Town meeting? Let's not accept the town meetings as...
There's not, I can't accept it, yes. Black and white.
This has to be shared.
Right. I'm happy to share it.
Yeah, we put it up on our website, I guess.
We'll have some copies to go right there.
You voted on everything except for budget reduction for, so we'll clean this up in the minute.
Yeah, I do too, I think the 50 ballot is probably where the...
But you haven't made that official, you've made everything above that.
Right, right, but still put it, that's what's next.
You know, at least have it at the...
Board of Select, the Board of Finance meeting on the, whatever date, the 19th. Possible?
Possible.
Oh, oh, word.
Yeah, 17th, Board of Selectmen. And I would suggest we have a finance meeting after.
It doesn't make a difference.
We'll make a plan on doing this, we'll, we'll make a plan. I don't know.
Well, I can't, it's not under action items. I'd like to have a Board of Finance meeting after the referendum. Another...
No, finance, sub meeting?
Finance, sub meeting, yeah, sub meeting after the referendum where we can discuss these.
You can write on the citizens. Board.
I still say we should have board comments on...
We used to, but then they were taken out for a reason. The reason's not here, so perhaps we can put it back. Yeah, you're still a citizen, you can say, I'm a citizen. But it doesn't, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. I'll send out an email tomorrow requesting...
Okay.
Okay.
So where do we, where do we go from here with this? Where, because I purposely just sat here listening to both sides, and where do we go from here?
I want to see, I want to see the town's willingness to pay for the security officer. Not asking for anything else, I'm not asking to restore any programming, I'm not asking for anything other than security for the town's building, on town property.
Because, I mean, I think one of the, one of the things I'm very, very sad, and what Val said was spot on, and what everybody said was spot on. We only have one Board of Finance member here tonight, and she is one of two that voted to not reduce the school anymore. There was other Board of Finance members there that said it was the best presentation, the best everything. Two of them, and I will call them out, are Turtle Lot alumni, and they still voted for more cuts. Not one of them is here tonight to work with us on where these cuts are going to come from, when they said with their own words, there's no more room. Well, then get your rear end here and work with us. Not one of them, and they haven't been to this meeting in probably four years. So, I'm looking at the camera, Board of Finance, show up! It's ridiculous. We go to every single meeting we can attend, and if I hear one more person said that they have a busy life and they can't get there, well, I'm sorry, is your life more important than ours or anybody else? We ran to make a difference. The same reason the Board of Finance ran, the same reason the Board of Selectmen ran. So my challenge is, get here, let's figure this thing out as a town. Because until we figure it out as a town, Val's exactly right, Donna and everybody else here that said it, it's one budget. And we have to pass it as one budget. Okay, now I'm on my soap.
And, and, we are one community. And when you operate independently of your own agendas, you are not in community. Community is when we all work together, and that includes compromise. That doesn't mean it's going to be your way, Tom, or Donna's way, or my way. It's what's best, not for me, you, the Board of Finance heads or whatever, it's what's best for our kids. I don't think people weigh education in this town like they need to weigh it. I put myself in all those horrible situations, and economically depressed and whatever. If people didn't take an interest in my life, the life of my siblings, I'm sorry, I would not be who I am today, where I am. I've had good people in my life, and if I can attribute something to make a difference, and one of these students or a whole group of them, I want to be the one to do it, and that's why I ran. I feel lately, my hands are like this tied, my feet are, feet are... I feel lately, my hands are like this tied, my feet are tied. There's nothing in terms of what we've been doing, other than bleed and put the bandage on, bleed and put the bandage on. You're right, they need to be here. And Suzanne, thank you for being.
Well, and I said, you know, and I'm very open, I'll say it out in public, and I have said it out in public. For the Board of Finance to sit there the other night and look around and say they don't understand why this budget's not passing, when one of their members is a complete conflict of interest.
All right, all right, all right.
It's crazy.
All right. We're getting off topic.
I'm just saying, if I had that sight, you guys would all shut me up. It's an absolute shame because he's an alumni.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
How do you feel?
And I think it's a conflict of interest, so I'll say that.
Okay, all right, we're done. Thank you.
Go Patriots.
So we gotta, we're gonna, we'll discuss this a little, the budget reductions. There's nothing we need to do immediately because we still don't have a budget. Once that happens, then we're gonna, we can do it.
All right, so what do we, can I discuss? I mean, I won't get into a controversy on anything. Later on in this, we have on here an action item though about the reduction. So if we vote tonight.
We don't take action.
Okay, perfect, thank you. President Chairman.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so before we do anything else, we're gonna talk about new hires and new hire recognition.
Everybody agree? We are really pleased that, and thank you to the administrators and the teachers who coordinated a lot of our interview screening teams over the summer. They brought to us some really marvelous candidates. And some of them are here this evening so that the board could actually meet our new hires, which I think should be a tradition, that our new hires come and at least get to meet the board so you know who they are. So I know this evening we have Sean Sweeney. Sean, if you could stand. Sean is our new social studies teacher at TMHS. We also hired Dalton Pika. Dalton, you're not here this evening, I don't see him there. But Dalton is actually an alum of Turtle Lot. And he came back and he is our new ELA teacher and we're very thrilled to have him here. We have Mr. Andrew Burns. He is our health teacher at the middle school. We have Nathan Phillips. Nathan is a mathematics teacher at TMHS, all the way from Virginia. And a new paraprofessional, Jonathan, how do you say Jonathan?
Baroko.
Baroko. Is Jonathan here this evening? No. So we've had Andrew and Sean are both here and we thank you so much for coming and I'm meeting our wonderful board.
Welcome.
Welcome. They're usually not this hostile. I hope we didn't scare you away on your first week.
Usually it's a lot worse.
We're a very passionate community. Many of us are alumni, so.
That is.
All right. Well, thank you, welcome. And come to our meetings if you want. Let's talk about non-certified staff salary.
Okay. We have a few individuals, everyone else you know as of July 1 are at the start of the school year. Because they are contracted employees, their rate of pay automatically goes up due to contracts. But we have a handful of employees that are not in that mix, that at-will employees that Bob budgeted for, aligned to the salary increases that the other contractual groups have got received. So we have two tech people that are at-will employees, my data manager and the network manager. A library clerk at Mary Fisher. And then we have our cafeteria help, which you know that the cafeteria increases come out of the cafeteria budget, not the POE budget. So the total, I think I gave you that information earlier this week. But the total, I had said for the cafeteria workers was under $900. It's actually $560 to cover those increases for the cafeteria for the year.
And that doesn't affect our budget?
It does not affect your budget. And then the other three individuals, Bob did budget 3% for each of those people. So that's my recommendation. And then that tidies up everyone that was kind of left out there without a job.
Two IT cafeteria, what was the other one?
Two IT.
Media specialist.
The library clerk at Mary Fisher.
So four purposes of this, well, this is.
No, this is an action.
All right, so let's just talk about it. 3% was budgeted?
We do.
Just come right up here. Do you have any one? Do you have it, I'll wait. Do you have it, I'll wait.
Oh, in the crosshair, I'm so sorry. I don't think I put him in the information, but yes, the crosshair.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll discuss it when it comes out. I missed bullying because I wasn't wearing my glasses. So let me have an update regarding.
You can. I think we started off the school year and we had an initial incident that ended up on social media and it got quite around in town where a parent had an issue and went right to social media and started to complain about a bullying issue at one of the schools. And one of the things that I just wanted the community to realize, that we take bullying very seriously. And there are processes and procedures in place to investigate a situation when bullying is brought to our attention. Our faculty and staff can't act if a parent or a child doesn't inform a staff member that we have a situation. And in the case of what ended up on social media was that no one told the school. And had they done that, the very next morning, once we were able to identify who the student was, of course, the school faculty and staff, you know, initiated an investigation and worked on that situation. But there's a couple of places that I want to direct people to. We do have a board-approved bullying policy. And in that bullying policy, it has a very specific procedure if your child is being a victim of being bullied. And there is investigation procedures that we must follow. There are paperwork on each of the school's website that if you have an issue, please fill it out and send it in if you don't have time to call. But we will respond, we will complete an investigation, and we will get back to you with a written evaluation of the investigation that we've done. So we do have a thorough process. But I would like people to know that we are working on teaching children to be kind to one another. That's one of our goals for the last years here in this district. We certainly started to work on school-wide environments with positive behavior intervention and support. Trying to teach everyone what the rules are, what the protocols are in each building, to have a healthy, happy, and safe environment to teach and learn. Last year, we introduced the Ruler Program. We primarily introduced that so that we, as adults, can recognize our own feelings and be able to articulate how we're feeling. And now this year, we're gonna spend a lot of time on teaching our children how to articulate how they are feeling and then giving them strategies on how to de-escalate or how to approach other students. So Natalie chairs our Ruler Subcommittee and she's doing a phenomenal job. We're, you know, we're gonna have the mood meters in every room so students can come in in the morning and let everybody know that, you know, they're either in the yellow or the greens and we'd like to be there. But sometimes they're gonna come in the reds because they're having a bad day and they're angry. Or they're gonna come in the blue mood and be able to say that I'm sad because of X, Y, and Z. But the program's more than just the mood meter. It really is helping adults, helping students be able to identify how they're feeling because those feelings very often translate into their actions and behaviors. And so we're doing a lot of work around that. And then we're pleased to announce that we have been given a grant from the School-Based Diversion Initiative for our secondary schools, primarily to work on how to teach kids restorative practices, how adults should respond to those practices. And we're getting technical support throughout the year. So we are working very hard on trying to teach everyone to be kind to one another, to be respectful. We have a long way to go, but we are working on it. And I plead with anybody, if their child really is coming home and telling you that someone is bothering them at school or kicking on them at school, please pick up the phone and call your administrator or let your child's teacher know so that we can investigate and get back to you and put protocols in place. We have extra counselor at the middle school, so we have people that can intervene. And we certainly have our two guidance counselors and a psychologist up at the high school and our wonderful social worker and soon-to-be psychologist at the elementary school. So I encourage everyone that there are things in place. And I want, and if you don't feel comfortable contacting your school base, give my office a call because we can certainly look into it. So I just want everyone to know that we are doing things to address bullying. And before you take a shot and go on social media, please give us a chance to intervene and try to rectify the situation. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you see a rise in one school versus the other with the rate of bullying? And my other question would be from Nal. So when you start the Ruler Program, how, you started that, what, last?
Last year.
Did you see a difference in kids in the elementary?
We haven't gotten to that.
You haven't done that yet?
Because first you have to teach all the adults in the building. And there are four anchors. So taking the time with each one of those anchors, again, takes PD time, but to do it slow and right instead of fast and wrong, it's just my own philosophy of rolling this out. And so they wouldn't call it emotional intelligence if it wasn't worthy. So we have a plan actually for, you know, building a charter is one of the anchors. What will you, and we did as faculties. And as a faculty, we made a charter, each school. And what do you want to feel when you come to work? How do you want to feel? That's part one. And how are you going to get there? So they might say, I do want to feel accepted. When I get to work, I want to feel accepted, I want to feel supported, I want to feel what? And then the bottom part was, how are we gonna get there? It might be a simple thing, just hello, or, you know, I'll take care of the coffee pot this week. Or whatever it is, you know, that's, so we practiced on ourselves first. We practiced putting, day one, came and put stickies on this mood meter to say, well, why did you come in and you're in that frustrated red zone? Well, printers weren't hooked up, you know, they cleaned the rooms, they put things together. People were not able to get on Tyler. So there's reasons and there are 2,000 words to describe your feelings. And so we want to let everyone know the depth of this. This isn't a little plaything. This is from Yale, lots of research, starting with adults first, having teachers understand it. We're rolling out a charter on September 17th. Why? Because we have a Constitution Day. So that's where that's going. And you, we might try you out with a mood meter next time because you can go online, we'll give you a code and we'll see which mood is at the beginning and test it at the end. And then we'll be rolling it out to the parents because.
Take my mood ring off.
Like the, you know, respectful, responsible, and safe. Okay, your parents use that at home all the time. So we want to roll it out into the phases to make sure it's something that's not throw it at the wall and see if it sticks. We want to make sure it's embedded in the fabric of, you know, being intelligent about an approach to your emotion level.
So that's a one-way saying you haven't, you started using it.
Me? Oh, when kids come to my office, I use it all the time. Yes.
As a group?
Yes, and they understand it quite easily.
So, I apologize for asking you questions, but so how long is it gonna take you to get the adults to where that's gonna roll over into where the kids are gonna?
What? This year.
This year. We're targeting mid-year. We've already done a very slow introduction last year. We had to have a lot of people trained last year too. So we've done that and now we're moving into the second phase. I know Ian and our ECPDA are going up for some more training in November. We had to, the inner circle had to get a little bigger with the training and order board to filter out through the district. But we're thinking mid-year that the students will stop to be using that language. And the good news is, in our district anyway, it's not just one school piloting it, it is the entire district. So it's a K-12 kind of initiative that can scaffold up from year to year. And that's the only way you can get it to be embedded as part of our culture is it has to be systemic. And people are using those terminology pretty regularly. And then when it comes to my office, Mr. Pollan saw my feeling today. But, you know, it's, it is going to take time, but I agree with Natalie. We could have rolled it out fast and probably not done a very good job with it. I think we need to take our time and roll it out. But I would like to see children talking about this issue.
Well, my concern is, I'm like Donna, and I see and hear a lot about the bullying thing. That, of course, you never know because it's two sides. Do the kids feel comfortable enough from middle school to high school and elementary too, that when there is a problem, that they can approach someone and they know who to approach about feeling bullied? With their, like, the feeling of being bullied as a kindergartner or, you know, first grader different than probably a high school? But still, what is the process if they do have a problem? Do they know it's, there's somebody there that they can talk to about?
For instance, they're from off the bus and there's always myself and, you know, Ashton Ellsworth. So they have someone right there. Sometimes they'll just use, someone was mean to me. They will even tell bus drivers, someone was mean to me. Bus driver might even hear those things so that, you know, there's a place. Sometimes I'll hear it through parents will call up and let us know that a child didn't want to come to school today. They've always wanted to come to school, what's going on? So we find out what's going on. And it might be someone was, and that mean, where does mean stop? And you grow, you know, there was an instance today, there was a laugh when she said something, a laugh. And she thought it was a target. So a parent calls, looked into it, had nothing to do with anything. So, you know, we just want to take care of it? I'd rather know. So it might come from the kids, they will report. I have older kids that will report because it's, you know, we have the peer models. They're always on the bus and so forth, a lot of reporting. So we investigate an awful lot. Bill McDonald, he investigated four today, I investigated two. Just in one day.
And just to segue that, because you brought up the high school as well, I can tell you, there are students who come to my office regularly, to the guidance office, regularly to the staff, various things that are going on, not just bullying, just any sort of issue that they are having at that particular moment. So I have no doubt that there is somebody in the building that the students feel comfortable talking with and reporting whatever they're feeling, whether that's bullying or just any other emotion that they're feeling.
I will say that the four years at the high school truly span a huge continuum of developmental ability to respond to whether it's mean behavior or actual bullying. But in the context of what Mr. Pollan is just saying, with them being able to come to speak with us, we're able to help them navigate that, certainly investigating events that truly are bullying and/or events that are misperceived or misinterpreted. But it truly is about giving the students the ability to proactively talk about what they're experiencing so that they have that skill going forward as an adult. And without the vocabulary of Ruler, they need that foundation from which to launch so they can truly express what it is they're feeling, how they're interpreting things, and then be able to learn the art of restorative practices. So that we're accountable, going back to your idea of community, we're accountable to each and every one of us and we all need to care about each other and about each other's growth. But it's amazing to see that incoming ninth grader and that graduating senior and just the huge leaps that they've made in order to be able to socially interact.
Val, I have to just add in, these two weeks, after being in all of different schools of years, these two weeks at the elementary because you formed new families in each of the classrooms, being contained classrooms all day. So these two weeks, they are working on their ground rules, their community building, using the word family. And so I have teachers right now, they report out quite often if they feel there's something else that we need to even contact the family. You know, it could be things going on at home that they're learning how to do this behavior and then bringing that behavior in because it's been sibling practicing. behavior and then bringing that behavior in because it's been sibling practicing sometimes. So you investigate all of that.
Yes, thank you. I think this is all great, but I think we're missing one major aspect, which is the home. We're missing the parent aspect because I know that, and maybe times have changed, but if I bullied anybody, I would be at school the next day, but it would not be in the same situation because it was the respect for your own family name and it would never happen. So how do we bring the parents, get them involved? It has to start at home. I mean, we're spending a lot of money, I get it, and I'm, I'm all about protection of the kids. And bullying has changed because it's how you perceive what somebody is saying or doing. When we were in school, we probably would have just, you know, shoveled it away, like whatever. But somehow, since I've been on the board, I don't think, maybe twice, we've had somebody come before us for a situation that's that mad of a thing. How do you put that onus back on the parent? Make it inconvenient for the parent, get them in here and say, you need to straighten out little Johnny or little Sally. It's not, I mean, it's standard practice.
Well, we, we had, we had.
And I'm not just looking at you.
We had, no, we had parents in today when it rises to that level.
Yep.
Because first you got to investigate because you want to know it's not he said, she said, or whatever. So if it rises to that level, then I guess we have a whole process. Parents come in, we have a child study team meeting with their parent. We invite our social worker and different people there. Sometimes they need that help at home and we find out what do they need to, and it is a cure only if they're accepting it, of course.
Right.
So sometimes it's medical. So getting the right people around the table with their parent. And I have yet to hear one parent say, I'm not going to take, I'm not coming in. But it takes some steps sometimes to get there and it rises to a level.
Yep.
And when we're exhausting everything, we incorporate and then they, they do, they have, we have many families reaching out for help. So it, it's recognizing, knowing your community, knowing your parents and pulling them into the, to the conversation. They'll come in, but you got to, you got to call them and let them know. It's not just going to be all punitive against them because sometimes they, they need their, the help as much as anyone.
And I, and listen, when Emily was a freshman, I didn't know that she was bullied. I found out after the fact because her brothers took care of it, but I would have handled it differently than what they did. But anyways, but it happens. And, you know, I know Donna, I mean, I don't want to, you know, Donna's daughter, I know, was bullied as well. So, I mean, we've all been in that situation and even when, you know, kids are more popular than others, or you're out of the clique, or whatever it might be, you know, or family situations, it's sad. It's very sad, but I'm very strong, you know, proponent of you need to get the parents. And I'm glad to hear that that's happened. So thank you.
Goes on all the time, too, with us. We have family in yesterday after the investigation. Pretty much part of the routine, actually.
Yep.
So we're done?
I'm, I'm glad to hear that there are changes that are going to be taking place, you know, now throughout, you know, all the years. I won't get into my own personal issues because that's just my personal life, but want to know this, that I am a true believer in not having bullying in this school. It takes the adults. We are a village, we are a community. We are each responsible for our children. I have one child, but when I sit here on the Board of Education, I have, what's the number now?
Nine something.
Nine something. I have all those kids that I worry about and when I see or hear something, believe you me, I go and I tell somebody. So you have to be a voice. Everybody needs to be a voice because, believe me, sometimes the voice that you don't hear is the one that you have to help the most. Thank you.
Well said.
She does, she does tell somebody.
Shut down.
Okay. Real quick, Tom and I were, you know, having the exact same thought, we saw each other's faces here, this, this belief that, one of the things that just bugs me so much, again, everything that was just said is, is fine and good and we're working at it, but I'm so tired of hearing the community, the school does nothing. It's the school's fault. It's not. Times have changed, as we said earlier when we're talking about security, but at the end of the day, the reason the times have changed is because of the family. And if we can't get to the families, these kids are not learning how to bully in school. Okay? They're not. When you hear that there's a day one event, oh gee, I came into school the first day and I learned how to bully? No. And so not only do we need to get to families, but if we're doing everything that we're doing, I want to be proactive getting that out to the community because this stigma, look, my mother worked at rectory school for 17 years, $35,000, $40,000 to send your kid to seventh grade and they had bullying problems. So anybody who thinks the bullying problems at Thompson is wrong. Bullying problems are in the United States, in every school, in every demographic. A rectory school could just throw the kid out. We can't do that. Okay? So if we can't get to the families, we're going to fight this battle forever because the problems aren't, you know, guns and knives, the problems are the families. So, but I want to make sure we're proactive with telling people what we're doing because that's what's so frustrating. I'm tired of reading, it's the school's fault. It's not. And we know it's not.
That's the reason for the update.
I understand.
Because of the first day thing, that we do take it serious.
Right. Starts at home. Period.
Thanks, village.
Good. Let's do our administrative reports, please.
No, I've, Nav, you want to start? And on that note, we had a great opening.
Yay, positive news. Change the mood.
Everybody's mood meter, how do you feel?
Much better now.
A little bit closer to yellow.
My ring is green.
I have to, I have to thank Linda's idea. At first I was like, oh, I don't know. And people were calling me, are we supposed to go down to Dollar Store or come up? And you know what? Because they didn't know if they should come in like they always do and, you know, it all was great, big crowd cheering, the PTO wrote all these inspirational messages on the, you know, chalk and so it was, it was a super positive opening. We had hundreds of, of parents come in and then we had orientation that day for preschool and kindergarten. So, so it was a great opening just that day, which then we, we got right into our first Friday, we do a big PowerPoint and we get everybody in the auditorium. And I tell people the reason we do that, it's because they need to see themselves as, as a family, as a Marriott Fisher family. And so right away, and we have pictures that we took throughout the week, and teachers took pictures and so forth, Seven the Carol, she puts music, we sing our, our tiger, you know, Tiger Code song. And, you know, we talked about attendance, raise your hand if you're coming tomorrow, raise your two hands and kind of, you know, plant the seed, you got to come to school every day, every day, every day. So, you know, getting that kind of our own version of a pep rally, if you would, on that first Friday. Then we get right into open house because we want, well, the momentum is there, get into open house. And again, we had, we kind of, out of 18 kids per classroom, we had about 12. We averaged about 12 out of 18. And that's, that's a strong showing because we've had years, you know, that might be only five or eight. So to have 12 out of, out of 18 is, is good. The parking lot was filled the whole time. We had all the community booths there, it was like our own, you know, mini little community day. We had people signing up for voting, we had lots of pamphlets. United Health jumped in at the last minute, the YMCA jumped in, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, you know. So it's, I think people enjoyed that part of, of our open house and they, if they had already gone to orientation, they didn't necessarily have to come back, just, you know, but they did. We had parents still come back and meet music and art and, and other specials. So again, that was, that was great. A second would be, we have the Mystic Aquarium Grant again this year for third and fourth grade, so it will pay for all the kids going to Mystic Aquarium, plus the buses, so, and a field post study again for fourth grade, so they've got both visit to Mystic and the field post study where they do various kind of STEM activities with Mystic. And we started our testing for Niwa, the MAP testing, and we've also DIBELS for, through our reading team. So we're up and going on our assessments. And upcoming, and I want to thank publicly Mr. Wachowski, Suzanne, for coming to and superintendent, for attending our open house because, you know, people enjoy seeing you there. So thank you. And we have upcoming fire prevention in October and a big booster-thon from our PTO. So we've got some very active October development.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. As Nav indicated, I echo her sentiments. I really don't have any experience, at least in this school, or how openings go, so I can only report to you the feedback I got from the teachers and the parents, and they were just ecstatic about the smooth transition into the new school year. I've got nothing but positive feedback. I would say the only couple of little bumps in the road had to do with Tyler, but I can say that Heather Burns and her crew have been responsive and supportive to all of the teacher needs, doing the best they can to get everybody on track, and that's going pretty smoothly. So we, we had a good opening and I'm very pleased with it and I guess I could compare it to 45 other years of opening schools, but I can't directly compare it to Thompson, but it went very well and people seem to be pretty happy about it, so I'm, I'm pleased with that. Our open house, I know it was during the first hour during the spaghetti supper, I know you guys didn't have a lot to do, they volunteered to serve, thank you, but if you were around, around six o'clock, all of a sudden the floodgates opened and parents came, I guess they weren't hungry, so, but they came in to go to, to the classes and seventh and eighth grade weren't that well attended, but I can tell you that I'd walking around and my fifth and sixth grade classes were pretty full. So the younger grades' parents were very well represented. I'd like to publicly thank all the vendors in the community. We had about 12 or 15 vendors that contributed all the stuff for, for the spaghetti supper. And again, same thing with the teachers and the parents. I think they really liked the structure of the evening where they came in, they ate, and then they followed their child's schedule and went room to room every eight minutes and got a little overview and a sort of a course description from each of the teachers in each period. So they really liked that, so that went well. We have a PBIS committee chaired by Mary Thompson and I have a little update from her and her faculty committee on what PBIS is going to look like, some new wrinkles for this year. This year will be received, students will be receiving swag or behavior bucks for safe, respectful and responsible behavior. We will be implementing a new PBIS matrix that focuses not only on behavior, but also on social emotional expectations, as you've heard so much focus on that tonight already. Fab Fridays will be once per month. They will continue as well as some new incentive competitions between grade levels that promote appropriate behavior as well as promoting school spirit. Our fall sports are underway, our teams are all fully staffed and I don't know if Deb's going to mention anything about it, but they're off and running and ready to go. And Niwa testing for grades five through eight will be, the testing window will be September 16th through the 27th. Teachers should be ready. Thank you.
If I may go next, only because I wanted to just clarify for those people who are in the audience who may not know, Tyler is the new student information system that was brought into the district replacing Rediker. It's not some particular individual that Steve was trying to pick on in the midst of all the bullying conversation.
I'd like to report the bullying on Tyler.
Right. So Tyler is the new student information system. It has been rolled out, a lot of our professional development on the first couple of days surrounded, teachers getting used to it, administrators getting used to it, administrative assistants getting used to it. I'm looking forward to sometime in the next week getting the superintendent used to it. That is part of my fun. So it is, it's a new system for everybody. So there are some differences and people just getting used to those changes. So a lot of the professional development is related to that.
And living through many transitions of SIS systems, I warned everybody before we did it, we knew we had to change vendors, we knew we had to shed the old system and, you know, very hesitant about doing that even this year, but it had to be done. And I can't thank, everybody and, you know, every administrator and teacher has their hands in it at some point. And the tech team, I don't know how they have done the work they've done because setting it up on the backend, it's something that none of us will ever see, right? It's in the cloud, but there's a lot of work that happens on the backside. And will there be hiccups? There'll be more, but I expect that probably by the first of the year, it'll be all hacked to all of us. But the secretaries are still in the flutter and it's new and it looks different, even the interface looks different, the platform looks different. Where I used to click to do attendance is now down here. So it is, it is a big thing and it, it does take getting used to, but on the other side of it, we will be at a very current technology with the way you communicate with families. And I think that's key to some of the work that we're doing now and even the conversation we had around bullying, we'll have more opportunities to get messages out to families.
So just to give.
Yes, you can go next.
Thank you. And just to continue on that being, in order to let, kind of goes somewhat perhaps unnoticed, but in order to let Heather Burns and Danette Sineh do all of the work related to Tyler that they've had to do over the last several months, that has really left most of the other technical issues to Tracy, who has basically been running around handling all the other hardware and software issues. So while it's not Tyler, I think it's worth noting that all, everything else has fallen on the Tracy shoulders and I just wanted to.
Especially with the second year rollout of Chrome and the reinitializing.
Of all the Chrome books. So I just, it's, it's fair to throw some of that her way as well.
And managing her team of students this summer.
Yes. Done a great job of that. So most of our professional development right now, to this point, has been related to the new SIS system and we've had a lot of summer work done. I don't, I won't read everything to you that was in the report. I just did want to identify that attached to your package is the full curriculum strategic plan update with all of the areas and indicators that, that were accepted a year and a half ago and where we stand in each one of them, whether they're in progress, not yet started or completed. So normally with each month, I give you just a little snippet of things that have been updated since this, but usually in the beginning of the year, I want to give you the full report so you can see where we are. And then from this point forward, I'll just give you the small snippets until the beginning of next year. With that, I will allow somebody else to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just real quickly, three things. We also experienced an incredible opening, but I have to give credit to our student leadership team with a ratio of one to one, one to two, a student-driven, student-designed. I mean, they implemented just an incredibly warm, personalized welcome to all of our incoming, not only to our 2023 class, but also to any of our new students. We had six new upperclassmen, new students attend a day, and it just gave them a fantastic foundation to call turn a lot of home. So we're really excited with that energy, hopefully all in the, in the, that we're all moving in the right direction. As far as the courtyard in the middle of the school, we are busy expanding the major of the Pratt and Whitney Grant. For those of you that know Bill Monaco, he has been absolutely a gem. He has donated so much time and effort and energy dealing with me in the summer heat. We're looking at wrapping that up in the next two weeks so that students can use that as an open learning center and we'll get the walkway in so perhaps they can use that to transition to different classes. So hopefully before the hurricane, well, rains flood the whole area, we will have that finished and the rains re-open. And then finally, October 3rd, October 3rd, if you would please make a note of that date, we are super excited to be combining our expo open house and parent teacher conference night, realizing that the expo open house truly is run by our students. They fill the halls with tables full of evidence of all of their student activities and their, and their, their clubs and everything that you can do to get involved and belong once into your high school career in preparation for Community Day. And we invite the eighth grade up to see. see what is Turnalot all about, and it's another opportunity for peers to talk to one another in order to open up the doors and welcome them. And it also gives us a night for our teachers to be available, for our parents, our progress reports will be in that, that week, and with the parent portal open, teachers will be able to meet with parents that would like to talk about their student performance, but we're really excited about just having always brimming full of our community all in one area and just celebrating how wonderful it is to be a tyer. So October third, please join us if you would like, we'll be happy to set up a coffee table area for the Board of Education if they'd like to meet with the community.
What time is that?
Five thirty to seven thirty.
I think it's candidate's night for anybody who is running across.
Yeah, but there's a change. They are switching the Board of Ed One to the tenth, and it's now going to be, I think, the Board of Selectmen, candidate's night is on the third. We just got an email that came out.
So it'd be a great time for our-
Yeah, there's an email that came out today, so just take a look. Five thirty to seven thirty?
Okay. Chris, I know you're looking at the package tie, but with pride too, I mean.
Want to trade that for a Patriot's hat?
Hey, listen, one of fifteen's not a bad idea.
No, I would get rid of the top.
Nineteen ninety-six. Nineteen ninety-six.
My god, were any of us alive then?
Nineteen ninety-six. Nineteen ninety-six, you know what happened in that year?
Yeah, right, military, but hell, let it talk.
So I'm proud to say that the Bradley School Women County Program is fully up and running, we received full approval from the state. Currently, the program has nine students in it, six of which are Thompson students. We also have one from Putnam, one from Woodstock, and one from Killian. So as we look to kind of funnel some of the other placements that we're currently working with into the program, I think that by doing that, you'll see a reduction in transportation because you have a lot of single vans and vehicles out, taking kids to sites all over the state, okay? So it's running very, very well, have checked on it, and all the feedback that I heard is it's going very, very well. So there's number one. Number two, unified sports, we have a meeting coming up next Tuesday on the seventeenth, and again, we're looking to open up a basketball and volleyball, that would be new to the district, guarantee typical peers with students with disabilities on the same team, unlike Special Olympics, which is solely students with disabilities, so we are building unity and acceptance. Great program, very excited for that.
Chris, what, what grades is that?
That'll be middle school and high school.
Okay.
Middle school and high school. Best buddies, we have that, the folks coming out this Wednesday on the half-day to talk to the three faculties, so we can get that up and running. And then lastly, I'm looking to implement a local advisory committee, a kind of a support group for parents who have children with disabilities, we would meet four times throughout the year on different topics that the parents want to learn more about, so there would be informational sessions.
Thank you.
Yes.
With the Bradley program, is there a way to go to people that are in town that are outplaced to other areas and have them, I don't want to say sell it, but explain it that it's, that it is in town and that it can be, that the students can relocate it?
So we have reached out, are you talking about other neighboring districts?
No, well, even, we still have so many students outplaced, we bring them back.
So over, during the summer months, that was, one of my jobs was to reach out to these families and kind of let them know this is the direction that we're heading in. It was a little difficult because at that time, we didn't have the space that was finalized, so I couldn't even show them a classroom or meet the staff. But as we are now, we have this awesome program, and we have space that's furnished, you have the staff here, people are inquiring about it, so I am anticipating you'll see that number go up and you'll see the outplaced number go down, and then with that, you know, first and foremost, least restrictively, that back here on campus, it's, it's very difficult to take a student from site A, and then they're doing well, and now you want to bring them back here when you don't offer the same service, that's very difficult to do, but if you offer that service here and you start transitioning out with the same support, the likelihood is much, much better than that outcome.
You drive less, spend less time transporting them.
Of course.
Is this something that the leadership group would be involved in, or National Honor Society with volunteer hours?
Actually, our entire high school is involved with it. I mean, we're embedding all of our homeroom activities with this group, making them a part of us, they're also already entering into some of our mainstream classes.
Or peer model, whatever, I mean, I don't know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good.
Yes.
The six students that are from Thompson that are in the program, where are they in the neighborhood? Are they in with the-
They're outplaced.
They're considered outplaced.
It's still outplaced.
Oh, so they're just considered outplaced?
Yes.
Any other questions for Chris?
What's the reason for that, is it?
It's because it's a tuition-based program, remember, it is still a therapeutic setting, it just happens to be here on campus. The advantage to us is a reduced tuition and possibly lower transportation costs.
And then, of course, ultimately, the main goal to get them out of the program altogether and back in within typical peers, they won't need that support at all, that's the ultimate goal.
Are they not in the total enrollment? Or no?
So our kids-
So they wouldn't be in the nine to three?
Correct, if they're not by the nine to three.
No, but you know what I noticed on here? We don't have a separate, we don't have a separate Bradley one, and we might want to do them.
Sure. So that twenty-one, six are in Bradley?
Correct.
Correct. Here, here.
Yes, here in Bradley.
But not, not, not the two freestanding, so you have one in Providence and one in Monville, that's not here.
Right, yeah, some kind of designation would just be nice each month. Whatever you want to call it.
And I know it comes in his update, you're going to continue to update the board on the enrollment in the Bradley program, like how many Thompson students, how many other district students?
Of course.
Because ultimately, what is the, the total capacity for this Bradley program?
And each room could house thirteen students. That's the cap. And if that were the case, if the number did go that high, they would add additional support to the classroom.
And this is just like all the other, you know, special ed or like placement, it could happen anytime throughout the year, we can take students in, you know?
I mean, there's, there's criteria for it, because again, it's a tuition-based program, so we want to really be careful what we're doing, and you want to make sure that you have followed least restrictive environment, what did you try, does it really need to go that route? And then, you know, if it does, then fine, but I just know that when you operate this way, the turnaround, it's, it's really well documented, you'll see great results in the end.
Thank you.
So here's an initiative, since we're in tight budgetary situations, this is an initiative which is a positive. How do we get that out there? Because, you know-
We haven't done a lot with marketing that out yet, because we actually wanted to make sure that the classrooms were established and the staff was in place, and that really literally only happened two weeks ago. So those classrooms are ready, I think Bradley staff are now talking with other districts to stop bringing kids in. So, I mean, we can certainly do a press release and talk about it, but I want to talk to, I know I did talk to Gary O about talking about the Bradley program on the radio when the Bradley staff is ready, to have a conversation about, you know, providing least restrictive supports here on campus. So that's in our planning to do that, but we just wanted it to-
I mean, it's just, it's sad that we have to blow our own horn, because this is just something that we would normally do, and I know we voted as a board to move forward with it. But I think in this situation, in this time that we're in, we need to show the initiative that, look, this would have cost X if we were sending out, here's, and it's not a cost savings, but it's a responsible use of funds, or however we want to express it.
And it is, it is a cost savings, and we should be tooting our own horn because-
Then let's do it.
Well, we're going to do a presentation probably to the Board of Finance, because there's only one member here tonight about, about high school choice, and maybe this could, we could do this at the same time and show them this is what we're doing to be responsible.
And if I may, not only inviting other towns to participate, we're able to keep our children home.
Right.
And educate them here in an educational setting that is the most appropriate for them. I see that as the biggest one.
If it's the most appropriate for them.
If it's the most appropriate setting.
Okay. Good, with Chris?
Yeah.
Then you want to fill us in on anything?
Spinelli Deli?
That opens Thursday as well. First game- Trish Chouma and her accounting department are running that. Girls open against Ledger on Thursday, boys with Ellis on Friday, and football with Wolcott, their first home game is Friday night, six-thirty Friday night football. Middle school sports starts next week. There are games.
Thank you.
When we're up and running, there we go.
Mr. Birch, how is the opening?
By all accounts, it was pretty smooth.
How's the roof, Mr. Birch?
The roof's full of holes. They, they all showed up right on the first day like they were supposed to. This summer, we removed one oil tank, we filled another one with concrete and abandoned it in place, all of the soil samples came back clean, so short of a formal report, we are just about done with DEP, and I'm thinking that with the reimbursement process, maybe by about the first of the year, for the first time since two thousand and four, I will not have to talk about an oil tank. We did, this summer, we completed the LED project for the exterior lighting. As you leave tonight, you'll probably notice a few that are out, because I have a punch list that we're working with Otis Energy, the contract that it resolved. We took down about thirty dead stand trees this summer that did not survive the gypsy moss over the last couple of years, they still have to do some stump grinding, that project's almost complete. We have a new fence going up on the driveway to replace the snow fence, that should be happening in the next three or four weeks. We did a little bit of work with Chris and the Bradley folks to try to get that program up and running, so that that was ready for the first day of school. We finished the bollards last week, and so that means the two thousand and seventeen security grant is complete, and I'm going to submit for the last reimbursement on that. We started the two thousand and eighteen security grant, the elementary school has just about all of the ballistic window film installed, we're about halfway through the middle school, they've been working weekends, nights, trying to get that done while they're not in anybody's way. We did some concrete work, and we did do some work on the Spinelli Deli. So I guess the short of it is, is that nothing is really complete, but we're getting there and we're trying to make it seamless for everybody involved.
And I will say the new entrance stairs to the high school, and I've seen some other stairwell work, it looks phenomenal, very, very happy, thank you.
To be blunt, the concrete around the bollards is unacceptable, I wouldn't give them a dime until they clean that up, period, I couldn't get away with that. And I think that some little flowers that were thrown around to from down the elementary school means somebody else thinks the same thing I do. So I think it all, it's very unsightly at every entrance. No, not the bollards themselves, I understand, we decided not to, not to cover them, but the concrete around them, that, that is, anybody here that doesn't do concrete could have done just as good of a job. So I'm just not happy with that, every entrance now has that look.
Is it just, is it just because of the weather, or is it-
No, it's because they just did a poor job, they just threw concrete around it rather than sweeping to match what we have at every, they just, they did a poor job.
Anybody have any questions for any of our administrators? Okay, well, we have Bob left, and Lynda, you want to-
Yeah, I do.
Tell Bob what we're talking about.
So with the box report today, as you know, there has been like almost a red perring or an elephant that we've been avoiding, not necessarily the board, because the board has looked at this situation years ago prior to me coming, and have, have done this similar analysis years ago. However, there has been some public comment, especially by members of our own Board of Finance, that feel that the high school should be closed because it is going to cost the district a lot of money to close the school. So we had done this analysis, Bob did this analysis last year, we didn't present it publicly because every member of the board has already gone through this. However, I think it's timely now to take a look at the analysis that Bob did about to close or keep open Turnalot Memorial High School. I can tell you before we even get into the body of it, it costs more to outsource our high school kids, and so what Bob's going to show you is some close to accurate numbers, and I say close because there's some variables that we can assess at this time depending on the students, but we looked at the population of our current eighth grade all the way through our current eleventh grade, and this is what everything's based on. So Bob, you're not going to project it up here?
I would love to project it up there, I'm not capable of doing it yet.
Okay.
So, but next time I have to do a presentation, I will project it on there, I apologize.
So does the board have copies of that?
I'm, they're going to get it right now, I wanted to build some-
Can I ask that, and I'm not saying that we table this, but I think this is something that the Board of Finance sees to also-
We're going to, we're going to listen to it now, and we're going to present it to them.
Okay.
All right, so I, I listened to other administrators, I'm only, I listen to the other administrators, I get to talk about fun opening date stuff and all the great stuff that they're doing, and then I get to talk about this kind of stuff. So it's usually like the fun stuff, like what are we going to cut? And, yeah, I'm sorry, I just feel like I'm in a, I'm a flashback of paternity again.
If you could stand up publicly and say-
Okay.
There you go.
So, and before I go into this, I just want to give a little bit of history, I'm pretty sure that I might be one of the very few people who have worked in a district that didn't have a high school before. So I understand some of the challenges of not having a high school and what it's like to try to put a budget together when thirty-seven percent of your budget is already locked up in tuition. Remember, when you sign a tuition contract with whomever, you're going to be paying a certain amount per year, and then the next year is going to be that certain amount plus X, and the next year would be a certain amount plus X. When a budget is cut, tuition is included in your budget, when a budget is cut, it doesn't come out of tuition, because contractually, you're obligated to pay a certain amount of money. Now, you might try to convince kids that they should go to tech or ROAC because it's considerably cheaper than what most high schools charge for, for tuition, but again, you got to realize whenever budget cuts start to appear in a system that doesn't have a high school, it comes out of pre-K to eight, every single dollar of it comes out of pre-K to eight. I live in a town that's very similar as far as schools- I live in a town that's very similar as far as school strategies as this one is. I live in Lebanon. We have a school system, we have, our high school is Lyman Memorial. Very similar to Turtle Lot Memorial. Somebody a long time ago donated a considerable amount of money to build, George Lyman's family thought it would be a good idea to build a high school. They put in fifty thousand dollars. That high school will remain a high school, and when I was on the board twenty years ago, we talked about the possibility of what would be like we closed it. Well, the biggest thing that would be like to close it, one of the biggest things that we needed to take into consideration was we would, the town of Lebanon would have had to give that money back to the Lyman family in, at that point in time, in nineteen ninety-five dollars versus nineteen twenty-one, fifty thousand dollars with interest. I did it without the interest and just a rate of inflation one day just for fun, watching something and having fun with myself figuring, oh, it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay back without figuring out interest. So, the numbers that are in this presentation on what it costs to run the high school here is from our budget. So those aren't nebulous numbers. Those are pretty darn real numbers that based on the current fiscal year twenty twenty And I broke it down by, you know, salaries, which is, you know, two point three million benefits, five hundred thousand, and that includes health, dental, life, VICA, employer insured stuff. Professional development is about twenty thousand. Property services is thirty-two hundred. You still have to maintain those buildings, okay? The day the last kid walks out doesn't mean you turn off all the lights, turn up the heat and, and turn up the water. Doesn't work that way. You've got an auditorium there, you've got a gym there, and I can pretty much imagine that the middle school starts to bleed into that facility. It's a nicer facility, but then you can't really close this one either. Other services like telephone printing and travel is about fourteen thousand dollars a year. Supplies are seventy-two thousand, that includes instructional supplies, textbooks, periodicals, library, tech supplies, office supplies, and graduation supplies. You don't need to have graduate supplies because you won't have the high school that graduates anybody. Equipment, which is seventeen thousand. Dues and fees for like professional organizations is fourteen thousand, and high school sports is two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So the grand cost of everything we could possibly think of to run Turtle Lot Memorial High School is three million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Now, you're thinking, well, you're not saving transportation costs because there's a lot of things that you're not saving. You still, you might save a body here and there, but bodies included in salaries and two janitors, the two custodial staff that we have. So, you have to start with, okay, you've got two hundred and twenty-one kids at Turtle Lot this year, right now, maybe, maybe one or two less since the numbers we pulled last week. Next year's graduating class is a pretty small class. Using the current eighth grade class and multiplying it times the percentage of kids that normally go to Turtle Lot, okay? And using that number, there should be about ten more kids at Turtle Lot next year than this year. So it's two hundred and thirty-one. So if we go to the what it costs for outplacement. So general education, you have two hundred and thirty-one students. Woodstock gets charged by Woodstock Academy last year, last year, not this year, not next year, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars per student. I challenge anybody to be able to get it cheaper than that there, the school in town. Okay, you can say, well, we're gonna give them all these kids, they get all this good cash flow. Eh, tuition schools don't work that way, okay? When I, in my last district, we used NFA. Norwich Free Academy was very similar to Woodstock Academy. We used Lyman for BOAG, but we also used some general ed there. The other big center was Griswold and Matano. And then we sent kids to Norwich and Willimantic Tech, Wyndham Tech. So if you take those two hundred and thirty-one kids, this is, some of this has gotta be prone to assumption, and every time I assumed a number, I lowballed it. So the cost for two hundred and thirty-one students all going to Woodstock Academy, you have to pick somebody, okay? So, and I'll get into detail a little bit later why I think that number's probably gonna be a little bit low. Well, not only that, kids who are currently going to Killingley, BOAG, or tech school may say, hey, you know what? This is a better opportunity for me. I'm gonna go to Woodstock Academy. I'm gonna go to a place where I can be showcased if I play sports and I wanna be recruited by D1 schools.
And, and we're using it as a hypothetical because we've had no conversation.
That's right. I got this information from.
I'm assuming you also didn't.
We got a button on Killingley and.
I'm assuming you also didn't calculate in their nice roof fee they charged this year.
Oh, I've got it there later on. I've written my notes to remember the two hundred and twenty-one thousand that they charged Woodstock for non-recurring capital fee.
Yeah, fix our bill for us.
I didn't include that because it's not a perpetual cost.
I understand.
But that is my, one of the things that I wanna make people aware of.
Right. Well, that's gonna happen.
This year, the driveway next year.
Yeah, this year, they charged Woodstock two hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars. In one-time capital.
Maybe, maybe I'm missing something. Why in the twenty twenty cost for our teenagers now am I not seeing transportation involved?
I'm gonna explain it to you.
Let's let him, let's let him do the presentation and save your questions towards the end.
Write it down.
All right, so the cost of sending two hundred and thirty-one students is three million, two hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. Again, just to keep in mind, people, and this happened all the time down where I worked before, I'd rather send my kid to NFA than to a BOAG school or to a tech school if I had another option. If somebody just doesn't really think that this is a good solution for them, they might think that Woodstock is a solution for them. BOAG right now is about six thousand dollars a year and tech school costs us zero. Okay, so that two thirty-one could be two forty-one. Odds are it's not gonna go much down, it's not gonna go down. Now, the next thing to consider is when you tuition out your students to another high school and they have an IEP, rule of thumb, and this is, this is the rule of thumb that I used when I was figuring out when kids were going to NFA, we'd pay their basic tuition and then you double that for services, okay? It was, and it, it almost came right out to the button all the time and sometimes they were, they wouldn't even hide it. It was fourteen thousand for NFA and to send it to the, the house that was, had services in it was twenty-eight thousand. So they weren't even, it's like trying to nickel and dime you the, the services. They would just say straight up, your kid needs special services, it's gonna cost you double. All right, so right now, we have thirty-four kids with IEPs from eighth grade to eleventh grade. Those kids are gonna cost an additional thirteen thousand, eight ninety-eight per student. So basically paying double tuition on thirteen kids. That comes out to four hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. Now.
No.
I, I updated the sheet. There were three extra kids I had on there, I'm sorry.
Why are you doing eighth grade, ninth grade as well?
No, it would be eight through, the current eighth through eleventh.
Oh, 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 all right. You gave me the wrong one, that's all.
Yeah, Chris, I can change the number, I'm Chris's number, I had one number and he gave me the real number. So it's like four different.
Thank you.
So, I mean.
I see what you're doing.
The next question that Linda had, Linda had asked about transportation. Transportation's been kinda funny because you can't use the same configuration that we currently use for transportation. So I tried to figure out what's the cheapest way to do this, okay? Because we have our middle school kids and our high school kids run the same bus. Okay, unless you're gonna get your middle school kids to school very early, okay? You can't, you don't wanna run an extra dozen buses to transport them from their home to whatever school. You're gonna have to bring them into a central facility like Turtle Lot Grand Central Station out in the back where all the high school kids would, this is the cheapest way. All the high school kids would meet and then take, all take buses like a caravan out of town at the same time. And it's the fault that go, all go to the same facility. Minimally, most of those buses hold sixty-six to seventy-two kids. So for two hundred and, two hundred and thirty-one kids, you're gonna need five buses. So five additional buses, because you pay for the bus by the day, not by the mile, which is good because they're gonna be going a lot farther anyway. But you pay for the bus by the day, it's gonna cost you three hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. So the cost would be three hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars extra in tuition, transportation costs, on top of the one million we already paid. Now, special ed, additional outplacements. Not all you're sending schools are gonna take the kids that you would have placed, not even at the Bradley program, but kids who are in a life skills class, okay, that cannot be in, in gen ed, but another district's not gonna take them.
They're here now.
They're here now in district. There are six kids that we figured we'd have to send out to additional outplacement facilities. Those six kids, minimal average, is a minimal average, is sixty grand per child for tuition costs. Even if we got them two to a bus, okay, and use three additional transports, it's two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So those six students are gonna be another five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the cost of spending, sending kids to another school. Now, one-time cost unemployment. Not everybody who gets laid off is gonna find a job right away. We're self-funded. Six hundred and thirty-five dollars is the maximum, you pay it for twenty-six weeks. I figured on a number of twenty. I think some people would find jobs right away, some wouldn't. So at twenty employees, taking the maximum at the six hundred, at the, and the maximum payout is three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred dollars. So for a grand cost of four million, nine hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Now, the last slide is tangible and intangible costs. So TMS Open costs us to run three million, and this is real numbers, three million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. The first year of sending your kids out of town, regardless of what it's gonna do to the town's psyche, and I'll get into that in a second, is four million, nine hundred and twelve thou, nine hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven. So I've got it written down here so I don't have to do the math really quickly, but it's one point six million dollars more to send your kids out of town to go to high school than it is to keep them at that building regardless of how few students are there. The second year goes down, you can kinda figure it goes down because you're not paying unemployment costs. One point three million dollars more than we currently spend to educate the students at Turtle Lot Memorial High School. Right now, we're, our budget is going for the town is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars over MBR. I, I get a loss, I don't know how you get the money. The additional, additional minimal one point three million dollars to increase your budget. The only way you're gonna get is to take it out of the pre-K through eighth grade. That's the only place it could come from in a district that doesn't have a high school. Now, the intangible costs, and again, I came from a district that didn't have a high school and I saw this. Having been on the board event in a town that had a high school, I saw this. High school is a point of pride in the community. Okay? I, I see it from you guys all the time. I, first of all, I've never seen a board where more people are from town or are alumni, they're products of the system. You don't have that anymore. You're not gonna have that. Your kids have gotta go to different places, but they're not gonna stay in town. There's no special, there'd be no specialized programs that we currently offer, that, you know, some of the schools around here have some pretty neat programs, but not some of like, some of the stuff that we have here. There's no hometown sports, right? Now, that might mean something to some folks and it might mean nothing to others. How are you gonna operate homecoming? Where are the alumni gonna go to meet? What, what's the big event for homecoming weekend? Well, I know what it's like in a district that doesn't have a high school, nothing. There is no homecoming. Kids, kids leave the town in eighth grade and never think about it again. The music and theater stuff that's been introduced over the last couple of years, it covers the whole district, but it's not gonna be like that without a high school here. Reduction of Wizard of Oz last year, if you had no, if you didn't have a high school, that wouldn't have happened. It's just logistics, it's not gonna happen. That's just the reality of it. I couldn't put a number on that, but it's not gonna happen. And you gotta remember, pre-K to eight, that budget will be used to balance the thirty-seven percent that you'll pay in tuition. And that number in tuition, Woodstock pays thirty-five percent, the district that I came from pays thirty-seven percent. And when you start making decisions based on high school that you have no control over, okay? You can't cut that cost. Okay, we can cut staff, we can cut programming, we can have, we can increase the cost of insurance, okay? But you cannot negotiate down the cost of tuition. So, Woodstock's tuition budget increased, again, I had to pick somebody local, so they had all their stuff exposed. Why not?
Why not?
That's what the internet's for. So, Woodstock's tuition budget increased for fiscal year twenty twenty by three point six five percent. Our current budget increase is zero point six one percent over last year, okay? If we were in the same boat, that three percent would be covered by Fisher and the middle school. In addition, Woodstock Academy had some capital improvements that they needed addressed. And so they passed along the cost. And it's the cost that the, Woodstock itself doesn't get the benefit from. Okay, when we spend two hundred thousand dollars on something, the floor looks shinier and it's not leaking anymore and the lights are brighter and stuff. We spend money on that, they're tangible, but they're basically giving, they gave Woodstock Academy two hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars because that's, that's a property tax that you get no return on. Okay? So, when you review these numbers and before you start to ask me questions, are these numbers like spot on? No, but I tell you what, they're really close and they're not really close, they're really under. Okay? They're under. I tried to, that's how I, I budget the same way. I try to lowball it, figuring out, okay, this is the, this is maximum impact, minimum cost. So this is the, I believe that this would be the minimum it's gonna cost you. And I think, you know, until you sit down and start to go through the numbers to figure out how, I knew, I knew it was gonna be a lot of money. I didn't go into it thinking it was gonna be this much money. I didn't go into it thinking, you know, and, I didn't go into it thinking that I'm gonna see how much I can stretch it to, to shock the heck out of people to see how much it can be. That's not what this exercise was about to me. It was, this is what it costs for high school here and this is what it costs for high school there. And I'm telling you, again, I, in a town, my town has seventy-five hundred people, we have elementary school, middle school, high school. And I'm telling you, again, I, in a town, my town has seventy-five hundred people, we have elementary school, middle school, high school. And people, the high school is the center, the center of life. And all those surrounding towns around here, the towns around here, they don't have a high school like a Brooklyn, okay? Or a Pomerant, they wish they did.
When is this being presented to the board?
It'll have to be October, because I won't be here in September.
Okay, so in October, uh, the board members that'll be there, only one of them will understand what that special education, six students is all about.
Yeah, I'll go in there.
So I gotta make sure you explain the Bradley program, so the other five will understand.
That has nothing to do with Bradley, these students are in a self-contained, um, life skills class. They're not even in the Bradley program, this is another classroom.
But would it, it would cost more though for the, to outplace the, the middle school?
Because that group of students couldn't go to, uh, if we're using hypothetically, a, a Woodstock, they couldn't go to a Woodstock Academy, they'd have to go to outplacement.
But the ones that are here in the Bradley program, it is, we are saving money on transportation. So I think that number should be in here too, saying that it costs more, because now they have to be outplaced.
They may have to be outplaced too. So there's, that's, that's why, why I'm saying this is off the low. But I think even the first year costs are way understated. If you were to close the high school, there's gonna be an awful lot of people that are gonna decide to retire. So you're paying out sick days, and vacation days, and longevity, and severance, and all of that stuff. It's gonna, it, it's gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars, I bet.
At that. But to Linda's point, I don't know that we actually would have to close the Bradley program because we have it situated in another area of the school.
The high school portion, the high school portion.
Well, why? It's, it's an outplacement, so they, they, they operate with those kids, so by the moment.
Yeah, you might be right.
Yeah.
She's right, they could probably still operate here.
Yeah. Right, I have one comment to make. If you're gonna show the incremental buses as a additional cost, incremental cost of busing, you don't have it in the cost of the high school.
Because you're gonna operate, you're not reducing, you, you, you're, it's, the reason being is unless you're willing to start changing the times that your buses operate, or your, if you, if your buses still run on the same schedule that they currently run, you will need the same amount of buses because of the middle school.
Except the middle school students.
Okay, so you need the same amount of buses just for the middle school?
No, and the high school, they're gonna bring everybody here.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I, I did hear that, okay, yes, they have to bring everybody here, so we don't need that cost.
So, I was going on those lines there, so on the enrollment sheet that we currently have, with the students that go to Quinbuck Valley, Boad, Magnet, all these schools here, they're not included in those numbers, no.
Right.
I think that there is a key component in doing this slide that the, the public, the community needs to understand, that we currently write out a check for these children to go to these schools, that the busing will also be separate. Do you know what I mean? That's an additional cost onto this.
Yes.
The programs, I, I just wanted to bring that.
But those are, that, that's a baseline cost, but those costs don't change if you have the same amount of kids going to those particular schools. So what I tried to do is figure out what would, what cost would go off. Um, and so the additional, it basically, the kids that are already going, the kids that are already outplaced, and the kids that are already going to, uh, QVMC, and the kids that are already going to Killenly and, and Ellis, those kids are still gonna go there, so that's, um, that is, kind of remain flat.
Right.
And I basically wanna take, these are a bunch of kids that you paid for to do, go to school this way, and you can take that whole bunch, the, the same bunch of kids and have them go to school a different way.
So, so even if half of those kids that go there now decided to go to a Woodstock, that cost isn't gonna change because we still have to run the buses and pay the tuition there. But now we're going to pay more tuition when they go to the other schools, so the cost will actually go up. Your costs that, that we have now are probably not gonna change.
I understand that part of it, but there's people that's clear that don't understand that where their child goes to Killenly, that they're not getting things cut from their programs, they're not getting the things, they're not talking about cutting sports or cutting programs or cutting teachers. They just write out a check, and people have to understand that. There's still the, I wanna be nice when I say this, non-educated people that don't understand that, you know what I mean? So I think it's important that this at least gets heard, because people don't understand, I understand this, but it's still an additional cost.
We spend a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to send, without, without transportation, um, to send our students to the Boad. We cut a check a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
So we need to put that out there too, because even though they say that the budget doesn't help them or affect them, well, yes, it does. It's a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to the taxpayers because they choose to send their student out, elsewhere.
I just wanted to make that.
Which I don't think people understand, so to Donna's point, we acted with an out there. Is it possible to have Bob present exactly what he just did tonight? He has no ties to the town except, yes, he's an employee of the town.
He's going to.
So.
He's had, I mean, he's had great passion.
So.
Great passion for what you just said, and it's there. It's answered every question, every naysayer on the Board of Finance, including alumni. And I wanna close this school, which is a shame. And I will have words with them specifically.
Have it, have it, have it in another meeting.
I don't care.
Do it another time, not now.
So, so what's going to happen, and the reason that we have the elephant on the cover is because when we go out for Portrait of a Graduate, and it's not gonna be as long a presentation, but we are, are going to do a very condensed version of this. Before we start getting into, how are we going to develop a Turtle Lake Memorial High School Portrait of a Graduate without putting the elephant on the table first? And so that meeting on October second, that we're meeting with the Strategic Branding Committee and our town leaders, by the way, um, and other citizens in town that are, are associated with that movement, we have to at least address the fact that people walk away knowing that they're, closing the high school is not an option. And that's why we're going for the exercise of trying to develop those skills that we, as a community, believe our high school students should graduate with. And I've had numerous conversations with the Planning Committee for the Strategic Branding Group, and one of the things that they really want up front and on the table is that, yes, it's gonna cost more. So Bob is gonna do, and we'll give them each copy of this, and they can go home and mull it over, and we'll be happy to sit with anybody who has questions. But the next place this is going to appear is on October second at that meeting. And then we'll bring it in front of the Board of Finance, and then we should be putting it to bed. Because we know that it's just simply gonna cost more, and as we're trying to build, and your, your whole town is trying to build the community, shutting down the high school will kill it and really run counter to the work that everybody's trying to do. And so, we're just trying to put the numbers to it. I'll fill Bob, thank you.
The inconvenience factor, meaning a lot of parents don't have capability to travel if their kid gets stranded in a Woodstock. Um, if they, if they miss that bus that's gonna come here, and, I mean, how do you put that into this presentation?
There won't be anybody here to deal with it.
No, because, I mean, you gotta, you gotta put an inconvenience factor, that's a big issue for people that, especially in this era, a lot of people don't have vehicles, they don't have transportation, I see it when they try to get mental health services, they can't drive somewhere together.
Well, people are already.
Extra curricul.
Part of the kids. There's already conversations that people, and again, their student is on the bus for forty-five minutes. Your student's now gonna be on the bus, I'm sorry, for probably an hour and a half. Because not only are they going from your house to here to a centralized bus depot, and now you're gonna be, where?
As a parent who had no high school, um, my, I had two daughters, one went south, one went north, and they caught the bus at quarter of six in the morning. And with all the different activities that they were doing, your inconvenience factors.
Right now, there's a bus that goes by my house at five thirty-five. What's it gonna be if this ever happens? And God forbid, we will never attract people to this town for development of our town without a school system.
Val, real quick, part of that inconvenience factor should also be for students who need to stay after school with a teacher for extra help, just the, the fact that they won't be able, if they don't have a late bus, or if there's a fee associated with that late bus, is that just another part of that, when you talk about the intangible cost, I would certainly add that to the intangible cost, the, the, from just the academic standpoint.
And they'll be paying for sports.
Well, they'll be getting home at midnight.
Thank you, thank you. Right.
And I'll be making a team.
Yeah.
Bob, when we put this together for, you know, the presentation for Finance, if some side notes maybe can happen, because two of the notes that I took after Bill told me I needed to take notes. You know, your, your bus, additional buses, you know, that's at today's rate for us here, that's not what they would charge us. They would charge us more because they're traveling farther, so that, that three sixty-six ninety-eight a day would go up. So.
It's gonna go up five percent.
It's not gonna go up. And so, and I know you, I know why you did that, but it's, everything that you estimated, look, we've got a, we've got a hundred kids right now at Killenly and Ellis. That's a hundred kids, and if they all choose to go, that's a hundred more added to that tuition, not twenty or thirty. You added ten, I think, you know, or.
I didn't add any.
You didn't add any, you didn't add any, the ten was the eighth grader. So, to really point out, here's what I came up with, but here's what I lowballed. Okay, because the other thing was, you know, y- your second year of one-three, well, that doesn't include the three percent increase. You're looking at the three percent increase, if it's just on a tuition, that's a hundred and twelve and change. And if it's on everything except transportation, so they go up three percent on special ed, three percent everything, that's one fifty, one forty-eight.
And it's gonna go up, and transportation too.
And transportation, so, I, I wanna make sure, like, my argument to the people in town over a number of years now, whenever somebody brings up the high school, I didn't have these numbers, and I didn't care. My argument was always, forget about the numbers for a minute, we don't control the education anymore. We have the extracurricular activities that these kids can't get to. I have way too much time that it would take to explain all the reasons why I wouldn't do it for our kids in Thompson before we even start talking about the money. And so, this should end it before we even start talking about those other things that I wanna talk about. This should end it, but.
There's one other thing that, I don't know how or where you put this in there, but for last year's graduating class, I think it was one point three million dollars in scholarships.
Oh, my gosh, one point seven, I think.
One point seven? All right, so let's just split the difference, let's say one point five million, okay?
Yeah.
Our students, and I'm not saying anything bad about our students, but I don't know if our valedictorians, salutarians would be the same at other schools amongst a bigger mass. I'm hoping they would.
Right, but if I could just continue with your idea, if you don't mind, i- if that number to pay the tuition is non-negotiable.
Correct.
And the other two schools have to absorb that loss.
Correct.
Then, and then you're impacting the opportunities and the programming you can provide for kids, and you're starting them off at a disadvantage before they even get to those other seven schools.
And I'll tell you, having two college seniors now, with them having AP courses and, uh, scholarships and everything, one of them's graduating a semester early, which is a huge savings. Again.
I had that.
Yeah, I mean, there's so many things that I don't think we can put a dollar amount on until you get to that next stage when they start going to college. There's that whole factor that, I don't even know how you would do something to put that out there.
Coming, coming from, again, you know, I'll also add to that, coming from a small school, my daughter had a graduating class, it was like sixty-something students, I can't remember the amount. But when I look back and see what she got for an education here, she's studying abroad in Spain, she never would have that opportunity if it wasn't from pre-K all the way to twelve. Small schools, small schools offer a lot. My daughter, as well as, you know, other people that have attended this school, the AP courses, they've saved money on her tuition. She's gotten more of a merit scholarship. People have to understand that, you know, she takes pride in what she does, and she tells people, just because, you know, she talks to the seniors that are now in place, don't, don't go for the small, go for the big opportunities, because Turtle Lake does offer a lot.
I would, I would love to bring, I'm gonna ask my two boys to come to the next meeting because I would love for them to also bring a couple of their college professors. Now, I'm also on a board at Anna Maria College, and I'm privy to some information, but both of my boys, some of their professors have said, your education that you received at Turtle Lake Memorial High School has far exceeded many of the other students in that class. And that, again, has value.
Nichols College came to us.
There you go.
And they said that our students were so far and above in the accounting class that they wanted to articulate with us that we would be offering the college credit, um, because the, the kids already knew it.
Let's, let's just be careful here, because other high schools offer AP classes and things too.
No, I get it.
Let's not say.
But those other.
Let, let's just be careful how we.
I get it, but those other students are also side by side with our graduates, and they're not getting that recognition. And I'm just telling you straight out, because of what I've heard from professors at these two colleges.
I'm, I'm agreeing with you, you're, you're, you're in a big, much bigger pond now, those, those awards and accolades are harder to achieve. But these other schools do AP stuff, they do college credit, so let's not say if, if they, if we don't have, they'll never get it. Because they will get it in other places.
I know, but I'm just telling you again, I'm privy to one thing from Anna Maria College, and they have specifically said Turtle Lake Memorial students have excelled higher. And some of the other students. All right? And which, but if that doesn't get said, we get bastardized all the time, and it's a shame.
And I think just to close this, the reason that we did this analysis is very, is because people feel, and this is through the whole budget process, right? That the only way we're gonna get out of this is that we close down the high school and take that expense for a hot plate. And what this analysis shows is it's going to cost the town more. So people need to understand that. Uh, and even though, Bob, you might have lowballed some of this, and I agree with Sean that there's some hidden expenses here that we're not even adding on, so it could be a real sticker shock when we get into year one and, um, we, the town comes up short. But the reality here is that we've proven the fact that it would cost more, and that's the message we need to get out to the people who think that closing the high school is the way to balance the budget in town. It isn't, so.
All right. You good? Thank you. All right, let's, let's move on to, um, our action items, okay? We have a couple of, uh, initiatives approved. Monday, June tenth, have a motion to approve. There are different numbers that are here, we'll do it one at a time. Do we have a second to view, Tim? Any discussion, correction? Add Jody, please. Okay, all those in favor of accepting these minutes, adding Jody, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anybody wanna abstain?
I abstain, I was not there.
Okay. Uh, meeting, uh, August first, the motion to approve.
I think the motion to approve, and it's August first.
You have a second, please?
Second.
That's good. Any corrections, revision, deletion? Jody missing a vote. Okay, all those, uh, in favor of accepting, putting Jody in there, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You wanna oppose? If they wanna abstain. There was a meeting on August twenty-seventh, the motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August twenty-seventh.
August twenty-second, motion, have a second?
Second.
Any corrections on this one?
Jody's missing a vote. Next, the course.
Two teams.
Three teams, yes.
Here we go.
Here we go. Adding Jody in.
I'd like to.
And taking one of them out.
Can we also make a note that the other members weren't here, but we attended the board of finance meeting? Otherwise, we would have been here.
We know, we know where we were, I don't care if anybody else. Alright, all those in favor of accepting the minutes of August twenty-seventh, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anybody wanna abstain?
Abstain, she's not here.
I'll abstain. It doesn't matter, you can, you can vote yes if you want.
Sure.
I'll vote yes, I'll vote yes also.
I'm abstaining.
It is that seat.
I'm changing seats.
Budget reductions.
Chairman!
We're almost done. But, budget reductions, we're gonna take the list for this meeting? Okay, thank you. Non-certified, yeah, we'll, we'll bring it back to you at another meeting. Non-certified staff salary increases. Could I have them for the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion?
I'm with the motion.
Got it, we have a second, go on, discussion. I apologize.
You wanna make a motion? I'll just make a motion, or you don't want some substance to the motion?
We're talking about certified increases.
Okay.
That's, that's the motion, we got the second, now discussion. Now, have most of our, our increases around the event, two and a half percent? Yeah, we have to get away from three percent automatically. We, we just have to get away from it.
If everybody got three percent, I'd say, yeah, let's do three percent. I think most everybody got two and a half percent, so.
And less.
Did they have an increase last year as well? So, it's not like they're making, catching up from years of not having it.
Well, there, there's two different categories. Let's talk about the tech staff. I'm gonna say this about the tech staff. I think we have to replace them, we'd be replacing them at a higher rate of pay. Um, so there's that, and the food service people know that in September of next year, that the minimum wage goes up to twelve dollars an hour, so we're just inching them up. I mean, at the three percent, it's pennies, it's like thirty-five cents.
They're, they're coming out of their own budget anyway.
Right.
So, so.
So we're gonna separate them.
We should separate them, okay? So, when we do this, we'll separate them. I think our tech people should get a lot more than three percent. I, we don't have a budget yet. We are fighting about putting a security officer in here. We're fighting about sports. I, and it's not a lot of money, and they, they, believe me, they deserve it. But I can't, if, if the norm around here is two and a half percent, I think they should get two and a half percent. You can disagree, you can vote against me.
I voiced this opinion before, I think we need to come to some type of agreement across the board, and I know it can't be done because negotiations can't be, you know, done that way, but as far as I'm concerned, it should be a single rate for every single employee in the school.
I've said that before.
And I don't understand why we can't get to that. And, by the way, and the town, I, I've said that. As far as I'm concerned, every single town garage employee, every single town hall employee, every single school employee, one number.
Our teachers are the biggest resource in here, and every year we fight and say, they get, they get one percent, they get one point two, they get point nine percent. And then, just, just.
Hand out three percent.
Then we'll hand out three percent. I do, I don't think it's right. I'm, that's me, I don't think it's right, that, that, that happens. But, we're nine, but we're eight, so, it is, what do you think? I don't wanna kick the can down the road, and I don't wanna put it to next month either, I mean, we need to make a decision on some of this stuff.
No, I understand, right. The tech people worked very hard this summer on installing the whole new system, which is, I know, and you know how hard that is. You've been through several systems, ensures of the system.
Absolutely agree.
Yep, so, to not give them, it's in the budget, um, give them something extra this year in appreciation for the hard work that they do and have done in the past.
Alright, custodians.
Well, I was just gonna say.
Custodians worked very hard this summer, our administrators all worked very hard this summer.
Well, I understand that.
How many staff did professional development?
They, the administrators also have that, um, you know, the, the, the ability to get a bonus. The teachers have steps until they get to a certain point. So there's ability, you know, you can't just look at the percentage.
I just think everybody does extra.
Yeah.
Everybody does extra, especially in the summer.
Yeah.
Professional development.
I'm not disagreeing with that, but they also have ability to earn extra beyond the percentage that's in the contract. Except for the teachers that have been here over, that are on the last step, and even they get longevity and some other stuff, which isn't a whole lot, but, you know, we're talking a whole lot.
We're not talking a lot of money, and, you know, they, they.
They, they don't get performance pay.
No.
Like that. No, they don't get performance pay, which the administrators get.
Only the administrators get that. It's not like custodians will get that, it's not like anybody else will get that. Alright.
We have a discussion about the technology. Pardon me?
The budget impact of the difference between two and a half percent and three percent is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not about the dollar, it's never been, we've had this discussion for years. It's not about the dollar.
It's been a discussion time and time again, do we have enough employees? We've added on extra duties for our technology people. There are only three of them that take care of how many, we've asked this, how many printers, how many computers? Educating the staff, dishing out new equipment, maintaining new equipment. Now we're down to one person that does that, with, you know what I mean, when everybody else is doing everything else. So I understand what you're saying.
Everybody, everybody is stepping up and doing more. Every one of them, every one of the custodians.
Even cafeteria people.
Cafeteria people.
But that stuff, we were talking about that stuff, but we were like, that's the stuff.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm just saying, in general, everybody is.
They deserve it.
Everybody works above and beyond.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a motion on the floor to go with the superintendent's recommendation. We've had this discussion, so, we, uh, if, if we defeat the three percent, then we'll make a new motion. Okay, so we'll, we'll, I'll call for a vote.
That's fine, needs to be discussed. Because we have these discussions every summer, every summer. And the reason we have it is because it's put in the budget.
Can we also do this?
Absolutely.
So to Sean's point, can we add that, so we get on to the same calendar with this discussion? Rather than have it in the summer, we move it to when it should be? Which is during the budget season?
We need, we need to address it.
I thought we only addressed one portion of the, of the budget season.
Yeah.
That's why it's in the budget, that's why it's in the budget. No, that was a different, that was a different. Okay, alright. So anyway, we have a motion on the floor for a three percent raise for the four people. So, all those in favor?
Four, or? Are you doing them separately? What is this cafeteria?
No, we're gonna, we're doing them all together right now. Okay, okay, so if you wanna defeat it, we can defeat it, what?
Can you just say, who's that crossing person about somewhere?
Yeah. Yeah, Rocky's in there.
Yes.
He doesn't make, he doesn't make a lot of money. But, we're doing the cafeteria at the same time.
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria, two techs, library.
Cafeteria people pay for them.
Well, the cafeteria peo, the cafeteria people, they pay, they're paid out of their own budget. So, but there is more than four, there's, there's like five. We're voting on everybody at three percent right now.
You just.
Okay, I was gonna separate them, but.
You were, okay, that's all, I'm checking.
I'm not now.
Okay.
So, all those in favor of, of going with the superintendent's recommendation of the three percent raise for the non-certified staff, please say aye.
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 Oppose?
Opposed. I'm abstaining.
So, the motion passes. The, the chairman's not supposed to vote, I don't mean to break a tie anyway.
And also, the immediate response, I think last year we had that huge discussion about the cafeteria people being at a bare minimum. We're gonna try to rectify it this year, so, that, that to me is the right thing to do. We, we, we've got all those people. I write the two hundred and fifty dollar check just because I wanna see them get it.
Yeah, it's self-funded, so I agree.
Okay. Makes it to Thompson Public Schools. Okay, uh, alright, so the motion passed. Uh, where are we at? Resignations, we have resignation, uh, two resignations, a nurse and Carrie Nager. Oh, she's a parent. Uh, so could I have a motion, we'll do these together? Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, both resignations together?
Yeah. All those in favor of accepting resignations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Okay. Uh, no correspondence, I have none. We have none, old business?
Yeah, I think I can throw this on the old business. Somewhere, maybe it was in your update, I don't remember, somewhere in last week or so, I remember reading. Where do we stand, I know we were talking with Putnam about, like, doing some co-op classes or whatever you wanna call them, maybe some of our kids could go do this. While, while back, but, just.
So, there's a new superintendent, um, so, um, you know, some of the work that we're gonna do through the, um, farm-to-school grant, obviously will cause some cooperative, um, work between our teachers, um, so we can start there, obviously, with that, that particular relationship. We also have a gentleman, a, a parent volunteer, Caleb, and I can't.
Do you remember Caleb's last name, Danielle?
Anyway, I can look it up. Um, he actually approached us, and, um, our after-school robotics, about two years ago, we had high school students going to Putnam to do after-school enrichment robotics. Last year, none of our students participated at the high school level, so he came back and trying to recruit, so we met with Mike Joyce and Dan Tennet and myself, and Tracy, wherever Tracy is. Um, and then he also funded, and this is the remarkable part, he funded, uh, for us to have a middle school robotics team. He paid the thousand-dollar fee out of monies that he's raised through his robotics, um, organization, his enrichment program, and gave us two robotics kits, and Tracy and Dan Tennet are going to be doing the middle school robotics after-school class. And then, we're trying to recruit and have some of our students go over to, um, Putnam after school. There might be a busing logistics that I have to work out, but if we have kids interested, I'm gonna get from there. Um, and so, that's starting that work, and I think the work around the aquaponics, um, with the farm-to-school grant is gonna start to strengthen that relationship. But, um, you know, Bill Hull and I started that work, and now there's a new superintendent, so I'm imagining that that same cooperative, um, spirit will still be there, and we'll be able to do some of that. But it's those enrichment things, like, uh, football co-op, and they don't have enough high school kids interested in their robotics team, so they need our kids.
And it's for something else, so we can get out in the public.
It is, it is.
Another PR. Is our boat building program full, or is there room for to import? That's an after-school activity as well, correct?
So we haven't started that after-school because, and I'll say why, um, because we have kids that were in the after-school program. Some of them have, uh, transitioned up to the high school, and Mike Joyce is offering marine tech, um, second semester this year. So we don't know if there's interest, so, I'm gonna, I haven't talked to Stevie, and I'm looking at him, because we need to do that, to see if there's interest in the student body at the middle school to keep the boat building going. But yes, you're right, I should throw out that to Putnam and say, hey, we have this after-school program. We should do the right thing since Caleb, uh, has really stepped up and helped us out with the robotics team.
Just one last thing, did the aquaponics room get finished?
Yeah, so the aquaponics room won't get finished, and I'll tell you why. Because how this is all going to work is that teachers are going to attend, I've got ten teachers who have stepped up across the district who are extremely interested in participating in the whole farm-to-school grant activity. It's really a high school, middle school project, but I have some elementary teachers who are very interested. So we don't want to, um, I certainly don't wanna deny those teachers participating, because there might be a curriculum connection down in the elementary, but the kids can still go up and work in, in that, in that room. But the room is gonna get painted by Bill, white walls, gray floor, and then part of this competition is they break the kids into groups. Each group has to develop their own aquaponic system, and then they have to go before a panel of judges, uh, who are in the industry, and market their system, and then the winning system will be built by the children in that space. So Bob, Bill has to get it ready, and then the kids are designing it. And their whole point about that is that the before, they used to come in and just give the school system the system already developed. Well, kids didn't have good ownership in it, right? And part of the stem part of all of this is that they actually get into using CAD, and Mike Joyce's engineer students are all over this at the high school. Um, so they're looking really forward to starting to work on this. So, I'm excited, but we shouldn't see anything there until January. And then, food service will get busy because they're gonna have to take what we grow in the hospital.
Citizens comment?
Alright, Danielle Carlson, Free Rachel Drive, North Rocherito. So I, um, I'm a parent in the school system, and I had gone to the board of finance meeting, and before the cuts were made, really tried to reach out and say, you know, what my kids have lost over their time at NTBS, um, with budget cuts. And over the years, I've been an experienced teacher in middle school, it's been enrichment classes, it's been, it's been numerous things, but we still held on tight, and we knew that, Jimmy, love our town, so we love our school, we love our town, we believed in it, we didn't jump ship, as you'd say. I just feel like a lot of parents, and I'm hearing this from a lot of parents, they're getting tired of the cuts. There's, there's parents that aren't going out to vote, which we, you know, we as a town have to get our higher voter rate. I mean, there's just no way around it, like, we're running circles every budget season, because we don't have the voters that we need coming out. So we have to work on that, but there are parents that go out and they do what they're supposed to do, and it's our kids that are paying for it. And now with these new additional possibilities of cuts, it's our kids again that are getting the short end of the stick. And we're doing our part, we're going out, we're voting, we're paying our tax bills, we're doing our part, we're trying to be proud, Thompson citizens, but, like, we're, we're asking for a lifeline. We wanna, you know, we wanna stay, but we're gonna lose families. I've already heard, as soon as the word got out about the spring sports, there, I heard from three people, oh, it sounds, it looks like I'm gonna have to get a four sales line. Like, they're just, they, they feel like this is it, you know, like, what's next? Ever cutting this, what's next? They're also not here to, you know, hear what is happening in the schools, but I think, like, bringing this forward with the security officer to the town, I think is a great idea, because if there is a way that you guys can save these options that you're thinking about cutting, and, you know, have the town take care of that part and save the money, you're gonna make a lot of people happy. And they're also, it was a fifteen-vote, person vote, that we'd be losing so much, from fifteen votes. And she's, yeah, I know, my vote, the account nonsense that we do all the time too. Exactly.
But somehow, and I can't do this as superintendent, but somehow, parents need to organize themselves, uh, and, and.
I agree, I agree.
And really, I mean, there are people who are passionate about, and a couple have ended up in my office over the past couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Um, I, I mean, I'll certainly connect parents with, with other parents, so that that can happen, um, but it's gotta come from, you know, if we had fifteen other parent members, so we're voting regularly.
I know fifteen people who are often talking about, said I was on vacation, or I forgot to do my absentee ballot, you know, and that's where I'm kinda like, for fifteen votes, we're losing so much. And it could impact fifty kids' spring, it could impact field trips, learning materials. So I, I'm just saying that it makes my, I can go to bed better tonight, knowing that there's a possibility that we may not have to cut those if we can get the town to come in and step in for the fifty thousand dollars. But I just wanna say thank you for bringing that forward to the board of finance, because if we didn't have those cuts, I don't think it would be, it, it would, it wouldn't be good. It wouldn't be good, but. Jessica Bulby, ten eighty-one Riverside Drive. Um, we had spoken before about the outsourcing, um, I know that I've heard in past board of ed meetings when we did.
I know that I've heard it in past Board of Ed meetings, when we did the Saturday meeting where you guys graciously supplied child support, and I was the only one who used it, um, that there were a lot of other parents who were under the impression from other parents that they send their kids to BOAG or Ellis because they have a sports team that's going to be looked at better. Are we doing anything to follow up with those students that we are sending to BOAG? That they are actually completing their BOAG program and are staying in that track? And if they're not, where is their bill for that education?
So, I get a copy of every child's, uh, that's at the BOAG's transcript. And, uh, they have to take a BOAG class each semester. I have checked every single one of them, and they have, they, they make sure that they're taking, um, a BOAG class each semester. Whether the intent for the student to leave Turtle Lot was to go because they wanted to play on their particular sport team, that's obviously not apparent, but they are doing what they need to do so that, uh, and I am a stickler about that. In another week, I'll probably have Danielle send another letter out to Superintendent Rio asking for those transcripts. And I go through them, and darn it, if they don't have those classes there. So, they do, and, you know, bless those kids that are going there because they really are interested in that field. And I don't think any of us should be upset about that. They're passionate about it. But if they're leaving us because maybe they wanted to dabble in aquaponics, uh, well, maybe we should start offering some of that here. And so, that's where, you know, thank goodness that we were able to tap into some grant funds. We're not gonna be able to do that for everything. Obviously, we're not gonna have a plumbing, uh, you know, department and an electrical department. But Mike Joyce does tend to touch upon many of those topics. So, he gives kids a very broad overview of those, of those career pathways. We'll never be able to match the Ellis Tech. But, um, as far as the, the kids that we pay tuition for, yes, we definitely do.
Alright, and then, um, as a parent-
And we check residence.
It's two-part. As a parent who's attempting to get more parents out there because where, where, what is the line on what we are allowed to do therefore? Conversation before-
You can do anything you want. School, the school can only advocate until the referendum is set. Once that date is set, you cannot do anything or spend any public funds.
Right.
You are not bound by any of those rules. You can do whatever you want.
So, if I wanna stand at the pickup line with a flyer about what's been cut, what's due to be cut, I can do that.
I don't say why not.
Because the issue is, we do have that very strong contingent of no voters who like to file complaints. And I wanna make sure that there's not going to be any repercussions for it.
I can run that, but if you have a list of questions for me about what the parameters are for what the PTO, because technically, that's what- Send them to me, and I will run them by the attorney to make sure that we're not, um, getting into any, um, gray areas.
Don't worry about them complaining. I have big shoulders. It doesn't bother me. Anyone else?
Obviously, if you have a flyer and you wanna have a meeting, you can certainly send that out because it's a community event, um, so.
Okay, well, I had it at, uh, at the open house on, for the elementary school. Unfortunately, I didn't get to get to the middle school because my Girl Scouts aren't old enough for middle school yet. So, I was able to at least get that out to the, I tried to get that to as many people as possible.
If there's any kind of a meeting that you're going to have, or Facebook Live, or anything, we can certainly send that out.
Alright, and then, um, in regards to the Bradley program, those schools that are sending in, because I know this question's going to be asked, they're paying that tuition for those particular students?
They are paying the tuition for those particular students, and the benefit of that is that we get a reduction on our tuition costs because we take those students in. Is Jones correct?
Correct.
Awesome. Alright, and then one thing on the school security guard. I know it's, it's late. On the school security guard, um, I know that some of you have expressed that you're, you're kinda being used in trying to either stab off or help in the, limiting the bullying. But aren't their out, their hours are more of the after-school program hours? They're not in their seven to-
We have, we have a daytime in the building that's interacting with the students.
Okay. I think that's it.
So, thank you. Anyone else?
I just have one comment. Charlene Langoyes, Three Sixty-Nine Lowell Davis Road. I, I am very encouraged that we have information, and it's gonna be accurate information because unfortunately, I think the wrong information is getting out there quickly and wrong, and it's helping people make a decision, and it's the wrong decision. So, I feel like if we have the right information and the wrong information, and we have it, sort of look at it together, and if I'm looking at both pieces, then I'm gonna feel very comfortable or maybe brought to some questions like, why would they be saying this when it says this? So, I'm encouraged to see that you're gonna have something to help people understand, and it might have to be at a fifth grade level. They write the Norwich Bolton at a fifth grade level. So, if we need it brought down to that age so that we can understand what we're going to be losing as a community, and that they can see that there has to, we have to do something. There has to be an action. And the action that they're proposing is to do something that just stops something. But that action is going to continue for the rest of the life of the town of Thompson. So, I, if you put anything on Facebook, I think all of us should share that on our personal pages and watch the pages that aren't doing appropriate things and try not to communicate in any way with them except positive factual pictures to they, so that they, it will implode instead of-
Redirect them to the school website where the factual information is.
And as long as it's there, then they can find it for themselves. Thank you.
Well, that's the cancer effect that people do, and sometimes people manipulate that on purpose. The thing is, it's looked at differently if we correct it, but if someone like you corrects it, who is neutral, it's, has a better effect. When you go back and say, because I'm a factual person too, you can come at me with anything you want, if it's fact. But if you just wanna do it to be negative, whatever, forget it. However, if you have to prove that's for you as a citizen to help us out, we need that help because they're not gonna listen if we do it, even though we put it up their face. But if someone like you, who's neutral, does it, you can be a, a real big ally for us to help us out. And anyone else you have?
Well, we, we also have to be very careful because, again, I think if more than three of us or four of us start replying, technically, it can constitute a meeting, which then they'll have other issues with us. So, it's very difficult for us to reply in many situations, even though we're taxpayers. And you'll hear us say that we're replying as a taxpayer versus an elected official, but that still doesn't get through.
Anyone else? Oh, okay. Is that, is that it? I need, I need the board of Ed, who was going to portrait of a graduate on ten two.
Danielle, you're gonna remind us on ten one.
Ten two.
Danielle reminded me to text you.
Any other citizens' comments?
I just, just a quick question. Claire Walsh, um, I just wanted to invite the Board of Education to the fund run with the elementary school. It's on October tenth. It's the first time we're doing a fund run. It's a two-week program. And as you know, fundraising efforts are so critical right now. The bulk of our funding currently goes towards field trips, and we would just appreciate your support. We need volunteers, if anyone's interested, but also just sharing links once they're published and that type of thing would be really appreciated.
What's the time on that?
It's from eight-thirty AM to twelve PM.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just, I just gotta make one comment, quick comment here. Board of Education members, we all have, um, our things to swipe ourselves in from time to time if we wanna come in. We are not employees of the district. You can come in here to visit, but you gotta do it the right way. You gotta come in through the front door. You gotta sign in. We can't have two sets of rules, one for the general public and one for Board of Ed members. So, please, if you come into the school, do it the right way and sign in the office, okay?
Don't look at me. Donna, Donna stops me every time I say it.
I gotta get another one, so.
I don't even use it. So, I have supplies.
Can I give you my?
I follow the rules, believe it or not, I do.
She wasn't letting me see it in my bureau, but I just grabbed it completely. Is that it? That's, that's it? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Second.